We're ready to go live, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Santa Fel City Council meeting of Monday, May 18th, 2020. And I shall open the regular meeting and ask the city clerk for roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Mayor Phillips.
Present as well. You wish to read the comment or shall I? We're through out of the meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Would you please do me a favor and re, will you ask me that question again?
Certainly, sir. There's a comment with regard to this meeting being streamed and instruction for those listening. Do you wish to read that or shall I?
Yes, I will. Thank you. So this meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide public comments in the live chat and/or welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID, let me repeat that telephone number, 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID is 857-6072-3570 followed by pound. If you're watching on YouTube and wish to comment on topics not related to this evening's agenda, please submit your comments now and they will be read into the record shortly. Mayor Phillips, you are muted.
The city council met in closed session and I'll ask the city attorney if there's any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
And thank you so much. I'll invite the city clerk to address how the public comments will work this evening.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. If you're participating over the telephone and you wish to provide public comments, please press star nine when the mayor opens the public comment period. When it is your turn to speak, you will hear a notification that you've been unmuted and you will have two minutes to speak. If you're submitting comments on YouTube to be read aloud, please write "public comment" in caps prior to your comments, introduce yourself and submit your comments. Please note that there is a character limit on YouTube, so please submit your comments in groups. Additionally, as the mayor mentioned or as I mentioned, if you're planning to speak to the city council on matters not on this evening's agenda, please submit your comments on YouTube now as that will be the next item on this evening's agenda. Additionally, if you've submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the city council and we publish it to our website.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to open time for public expression and I'll ask if there are any comments recorded by the city clerk.
And once again, if you are participating by telephone, please press star nine. And while I'm waiting for those on the telephone to press star nine, I will go ahead and check our YouTube feed. And I'm just going to wait a few seconds here to give people some time to enter those comments on YouTube.
Sure.
I see a hand raised on the telephone. I will go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. My name is Fay Barrett. I'd like to speak on, I'm a resident of San Rafael. I'd like to address the item number six on your agenda, which is the virus status. I would request that the city council of San Rafael, please discuss with the Marin Health and Human Services Director and those executives of Marin. Mr. Willis continues to say we are following the data and the science. And I would like to have the city council consider the following data. Divide 14 deaths by a senior population of 85,000 in Marin County. The second arithmetic question is divide 48, the number of hospitalized COVID patients, by the population of Marin County, 260,000. And the third arithmetic problem is divide 329, which is those tested positive, by the population of Marin County, 260,000. If any of the results of that arithmetic come up to be more than two tenths of one percent, then we don't have a problem. We should open San Rafael right now because if I walk across the street in San Rafael and get hit by a car, there's this greater chance in my life of that being two tenths of one percent. So I request that you get to your Marin County Health and Human Services people and direct them to open San Rafael and its businesses immediately and not be slavish to the area of other counties that may have a different problem than we have. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And you may know, I'll just add, today we did open retail, we being Marin County, including San Rafael, of course, opened retail for curbside delivery, but at least our retail is taking that initial step. And the death count, by the way, is point zero zero five percent. Any other comments?
There are no other callers who wish to speak and there are no comments that have been submitted through YouTube.
Thank you so much. We'll now turn to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. We're beginning our 10th week, believe it or not, of our coronavirus response and operating our emergency operations center, which is, we call the EOC. It's the place where the city does our disaster response from. We're doing it virtually, but we've been operating our EOC for about 10 weeks in addition to maintaining many essential ongoing functions that we do all the time. I'm going to provide a few highlights of recent efforts, really just over the past few days. And I was going to start with some of the numbers, but our public comment there got them exactly right. 329 tested positive, 14 hospitalizations, one currently in the hospital right now, and 14 fatalities. There's been a little bit of an uptick recently in positive cases. And we asked the deputy county health officer today why that was and she said that she was expected that it had to do with the testing ability going up quite a bit over what it had been. So we're now over the 500 test per day threshold that I know even when the mayor, when you did your interview message from the mayor with the county health officer, he was saying that he was hoping to be able to get to that mark and now we're finally there. So we're seeing more tests per day, but we're also seeing more positive cases than we have been seeing growing recently. Mayor, you mentioned the big news as of this week, which is today, that there are some new health orders which went into effect and largely those related to curbside retail and manufacturing, supply chain manufacturing being open with specific conditions. And then also some changes to our parks and open space access. So locations that were previously, you could not access them through motorized access, now are open to motorized or regular access. There are still several that are not, particularly in West Marin and some of the more highly traveled areas. So the county's website lists those that are not open. But in San Rafael, all of the locations that we had temporarily closed off to be consistent with the county order, almost all of those we have now opened back up again. There's one or two that we're still in the process of making the changeover since that just changed today. As I mentioned at our last city council meeting, there's Marin Recovers effort and Marin Recovers industry advisors. That's a group that was comprised of industry experts, business reps, residents, public health professionals and local government. And they've been focused and looking at all the different types of industries and they have a working group for a number of them to develop reopening guidelines. And the group is guided by Marin Recovers Steering Committee, which our vice mayor Kate Collin sits on. So I wanted to bring that up because the city of San Rafael has been playing a leadership role in a number of areas, one of which is by coming up with the development of these reopening guidelines, particularly for the curbside retail, which started today. Our assistant city manager Christina Lilovich, economic development director Danielle O'Leary, led the retail industry advisory group. And then there's a summer camp youth activities industry advisory group that was co-led by our senior recreation supervisor Kelly Albrecht. So the goal of these guidelines is to ensure that every business is well-prepared to protect both their own employees and their customers when they reopen. So this is, a lot of the work that's going on right now are these industry advisory groups that are meeting and talking about how their specific businesses can open up when it becomes time to do so. The retail group was focused on site-specific protection plans. So that's what went up on the Marin Recovers website last week on Friday. And businesses can use that as a template and they'll be required to post them in order to reopen. The Marin recovers.com is the website and it has the industry-specific best practices that you can copy and paste into your site-specific protection plan. So that was really a major focus of last week, so that curbside retail could begin today. And I know it was a lot of work from a lot of people, not just city staff and elected officials, but various businesses that were involved, Chamber of Commerce and others that were trying to get this information out so that those that were able to do curbside retail today could start today with the proper guidelines. On Thursday of last week, the county launched their indicators for assessing progress on containing COVID-19. And that said, all of the county information is at coronavirus.marinhhs.org. That's the HHS, that's Health and Human Services. So coronavirus.marinhhs.org/progress. And that provides indicators that are being tracked by the health officers about loosening future shelter orders. So what are the progress that we're making towards containing COVID-19 in order to inform future shelter orders? So that's an interesting place that the county health officers are using as they see what can open next after this current shelter order expires at the end of this month. A few other things just to point out tonight quickly. One is that we continue to monitor both the federal and state governments as far as their potential relief for stimulus packages. You probably saw that the House passed its Heroes Act, but we're hearing that it's not expected to be passed by the Senate or signed by the president. So we're tracking that. And also we're tracking the state budget and the May revise, which came out last week. And they have until June 15th to adopt their budget. And some of that impacts us of what the governor has been proposing as contingents upon what happens at the federal level. Closer to home, staff's been working with our Chamber of Commerce and the BID on ideas for kind of the next openings, which hopefully will include restaurants and be able to include usage of places like sidewalks, parking lots, street parking, plazas. We're working now with the industry advisory group relating to restaurants and other cities and towns in Marin so we could try to have the same guidelines as it relates to these sorts of openings as we go forward in the future. Right now, even with just the curbside retail that's going on, we've made our free parking in all of our city parking garages. And we've also designated on every block, free parking on the ends, kind of the beginning and end of every block for curbside pickup. And we're absolutely willing to work with the chamber and BID and merchants to continue to modify that as needed based on what the, how the community's responding to businesses and trying to get people to access our, the businesses that are starting to open up in downtown San Rafael and throughout San Rafael. We have, speaking of restaurants, we have many participating in the state's Great Plates Program. That was the one that connects meal delivery with eligible older adults. So that's good that that's taking place. We're still doing a lot of emergency childcare and opening up new cohorts for school-aged children. And we've been continuing to do our regular messaging, both in Snapshot, which comes out from my office, and also the San Rafael is Resilient, which also is a city publication, but that comes out two or three times a week as well. So I mentioned the county website of coronavirus.marinhhs.org. The city is thecityofsanafel.org/coronavirus. And we continue to make changes to that practically every day. So all the information that I just mentioned as it regards to Marin Recovers and the business guidelines is available through Marin recovers.com, but also you can get there through our city website as well. I was going to end today, if the technology is good to us, by seeing if the city clerk could play a brief video that was put together by our employee recognition committee that was saying thank you to our city's first responders and everyone working on this crisis. So if you wouldn't mind, it's less than two minutes long, so it's not going to take a lot of time. But I just wanted to try to set kind of the tone of all the different actions that are going on in the EOC and pass along our appreciation to everyone working on this issue.
Excellent.
Lindsay.
I don't really know all the right words to say, but I know that I want to thank our police officers and our firefighters and our dispatchers. I just, I can't imagine what your life is like right now. And I just hope we're doing whatever we can to make your job a little bit easier right now. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. This is Margaret from Library and Recreation. I want to say thank you to all of my coworkers for working so hard. I appreciate everything that we can do together.
Hi, this is Cory at the Boyd House. Just say I really appreciate and am inspired by all the kindness, the dedication and enthusiasm and the teamwork that everybody's showing. And I'm really grateful to be part of such an awesome team.
On behalf of the employee recognition committee and your fellow coworkers, thank you to every single employee for your efforts during this unprecedented time. You are appreciated.
So Mayor, so that concludes my report. I just wanted to add that sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words and we thank you for letting us play that short video. Just really tries to express the gratitude that we have for all the work that's going on. I sometimes think about what we're doing right now as it's as if it were a couple of different organizations happening at the same time. We have our normal city business that we're trying to continue and then we're also operating this disaster response organization. And there's a lot of overlap, but there's a lot going on and our employees are doing their best to support our community during this time. So thank you.
Well, thank you for showing that. That is fun. And more importantly, I would suggest is it's amazing to me and certainly pleasing how everybody's come together in this trying time. It's difficult for so many within our community and certainly within the city group. But everybody is coming together and I think doing remarkable things. So thanks for sharing that with us and I enjoyed that a lot and I'm sure we all did. So thank you so much. I'll just touch on two quick things. I did have a COVID test the last Wednesday, got the results on Friday, negative. That's a good thing. But a stat that came up when I talked with Dr. Willis not so very long ago, which I thought was kind of startling, I'll pass it on to you. I was interviewed by Channel Four today and passed it on to them as well. There are 58 counties in the state of California. And Marin County is number 17 in terms of the open, this is per capita, but open cases. the open, this is per capita, but open cases, which is pretty far up on that chain, which surprised me. And again, 58 counties within California, and Marin County is 10th in terms of deaths per capita. So this thing is upon us, even though it seems like we have it under control, there's still consequences we're all dealing with. So, thanks for everything that everyone is doing, including council members, of course, and our community as a whole. I think we are doing a wonderful job. And we will get through this. Having said that, let's move on to the consent calendar, of which we have two items. Foray Approval of Minutes, Francisco Boulevard's East Sidewalk Improvement, two subparts. Any council comments or questions, or have any of those held? Not, in which case, they will be covered in a single motion, but I'll ask if there's public comment first. Any public?
If you are participating by telephone and wish to speak on an item on the consent calendar, please press star nine. And while I wait for people who are listening by telephone to press star nine, I will also request that public comments be submitted through YouTube. I'm going to wait about 10 to 15 seconds. I'm seeing no comments on YouTube, and I'm seeing no virtual hands raised on our conference call.
Thank you. In which case, is there a motion with regard to the consent items?
Move Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am Atticarius 5-0. Will turn to the Public Hearing Annual Progress Report on Housing. Staff report, please. Paul, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council members. I have to say, I think this is the first time in my memory that an annual housing progress report has been presented to the city council in a public hearing forum. Typically, we handle these reports informally, and they're usually folded into an annual report on the general plan that's presented to the city council. However, there have been changes in the state housing laws that we reported to you in the past, and they require a higher level of accountability on the part of the local jurisdiction. So that's in part why we're presenting this tonight, other than the laws now do require us to hold a public hearing. Before I turn it over to Ally Judice, our principal planner who's been working on this, I would like to note that while we've done a notable job in approving just under 300 housing units last year through the planning process, where it matters most is new units that are built and occupied. And if you may recall, the report on challenges to housing not only addressed process and approval of housing, but actually getting housing built. So with that said, we can do better, and the report that we presented to the city council in January, which outlined our housing policy priorities, actually lays out some improvements that we are pursuing that will help us get from approved projects to built projects. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ally.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So as Paul was saying, every year we are obligated to report out on the progress of our, meeting our fair share of the regional housing needs, also known as RINA numbers. We provide this report normally to the State Department of Housing and Community Development Department, as well as the Department of Office of Planning and Research. And over the years, the information that we've been reporting out has become much more in-depth, and where we usually used to report out summary of what housing bills had occurred during the prior reporting year, now we're providing details such as applications to middle days, permit numbers, date of issuance, number of units, level of affordability, and in a much more in-depth, multi-table format. A key component of the report out is, excuse me, is a Table B, which is an auto-populated table that provides information from all of the tables that we prepared prior to this. And it shows us where we fall in terms of meeting our numbers. Our total RINA obligation for the eight-year reporting cycle is 1,007 units. We are 242 units into that, and we're, we have four more years to go. For the last year, the reporting year 2019, we issued 28 building permits. What the Housing and Community Development Department uses for calculating whether we have met our RINA numbers is the number of building permits that have been issued. The number of building permits that were issued include 13 accessory dwelling units, nine were part of a nine-unit development project, 21G Street, five were single-family homes, and one was a multi-unit complex. What this table doesn't show you is approvals that were issued in terms of entitlements in 2019. Your city council and Planning Commission also approved 265 units, and that included 120 units that were part of 703 Third Street, 136 units that were part of the North Gate Walk, and nine units that were part of 1628 Fifth Avenue, and that was a Planning Commission approval that was, that occurred in 2019. We are also obligated to report out on our progress in terms of removing barriers to housing affordability. In 2019, we looked at a few programs to evaluate opportunities for housing protection and housing development. One of those things included reviewing our accessory dwelling units ordinance. We were well into the year and ready to kind of pull together the ordinance, and then the state did a switch on us and completely revamped their, the accessory dwelling units legislation. So it's forced us to start fresh, and we're doing that. We hope to have a accessory dwelling unit ordinance to you this year. Another thing that we looked at is a Fair Housing Program. In 2019, your council adopted renter protection, just cause eviction and mandatory mediation ordinance. The city continues to look for ways to preserve rental housing that is affordable to low-income households. And then in 2019, staff completed a planning and feasibility study of six city-owned lots to assess a potential for air rights housing development, and we continue to look for that as an opportunity for housing. While we continue to find ways, excuse me, while we continue to find ways and opportunities for removing barriers, as Paul was saying, we have a ways to go in meeting our RINA obligations. We have a total of 1,007 units that we need to account for, and we are, at this point, short over 700 units. For 2020, we will continue looking for ways to remove barriers, and staff is looking at some projects to come, to bring before you. One of those is evaluating or reevaluating our inclusionary housing ordinance. We are working with a consultant in preparation of objective standards that could be used to facilitate by write review. And then we are working with a consultant, as you know, on work on preparation of a precise plan for the downtown that would facilitate residential development in a form-based process. The city did receive a letter from the Sustainable San Rafael Group noting, one of the main things they noted is that, yes, we are, we are needing to continue to work on removing barriers for development of housing, and also the fact that in looking at the numbers, I'll go back to the RINA numbers, the areas where we are lacking is where there's the greatest need in the very low, low-income categories, and so they're requesting more effort in that area. So I think, I believe that letter has been forwarded to you. And that concludes my report. I'm asking, we are, staff is asking the council to accept the report. There is no official action other than that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Leave it on. Any case, thanks once again for the report. Any public comment?
If you are participating by telephone and wish to have your comments heard, please press star nine. And while I request, while I wait for participants to press star nine, I will ask for any folks watching on YouTube to submit their comments on YouTube. I do see some hand raised. I will go ahead and allow to speak, and if you receive a notification that you've been unmuted, you're welcome to speak for two minutes.
Hi, my name is Peter Dickinson. I just had a quick question. If everything stays on track the way it currently is going, do you guys have an estimate date on when you can think you may be able to open everything up? That's all.
Well, I appreciate the comment, but it's a little out of context with regard to the agenda that's before us. But let me just quickly say, I think it's fair to say that we're not certain. I don't think anyone is certain as to when things will be open. Anyone else?
Yes.
Good evening. Good to see you all. This is Bill Carney of Sustainable San Rafael. And just to add to what was said, yeah, you know, in terms of building permits so far, it looks like we're about a quarter of the way to the goal, whereas we're halfway through the housing cycle. So we would encourage that those units that have been approved but not yet permitted, that they move forward and that the city do all that it can to identify with the developer, any developers, any obstacles that the city might be able to assist with getting those units underway or those developments underway, which also, of course, would be of value as an economic stimulus. We also pointed out in our letter that the city has been quite involved for the last year in developing new housing policies that will hopefully result, intend to result in more affordable units. And we would encourage the city at this time to move forward with those as well, which would include things like accessory units and building over air rights of public property. So there are opportunities here, even in the midst of down times, to stimulate the economy by addressing this pressing need of housing. And we, of course, have seen in the current crisis that those who are least well-housed have been differentially, you know, extremely hit by this virus. Housing is a critical public health issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may have muted your telephone. Salama, we're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You can, thank you.
I'm not speaking to this topic. I was not recognized when we had the open session, so should I wait to speak?
Salama, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you very much. Salama Locke, San Rafael Commissioner to the Commission on Aging. I had just wanted to say two things. One, just about the census, and just to let you know that Marin County census totals so far that has been conducted is 67.1%. However, San Rafael's, Ocuromadera is leading with 76% return. San Rafael's is 56%, Nevada's is 73.1%, I think I have 73.1%. So we in San Rafael need to encourage our residents to please do the 2020 census. Item two is a, just a heads up that for our June, the Commissioner's June 4th meeting, we will be having a, one of our county treasurers, Dr. Larry Brilliant will be speaking. He's an epidemiologist, and he will be speaking and addressing questions related to the situation in which we find ourselves. I will have the contact information at your June 1st meeting. Thank you very much.
And thanks to you for your comments. Anyone else?
I see no more hands raised on the telephone, and we have received no more comments on YouTube.
Okay, we'll close, public comment, come back for a comment or perhaps a motion to accept the report. Vice Mayor Collin.
I'll make a motion to accept the report and say to the staff what a great job that was. That was a lot of data and a lot of information, and it's nice to see it all in one place. So thank you so much. With that, I make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am Atticarius 5-0. Will now turn to other agenda items, 6A, which is COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan, after which we'll have a break.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start us off on this one. This is Jim Schutz, the city manager. We were looking for a simple document that could very quickly illustrate how the city's impacted by COVID-19 and what we're doing about it. So we put together this economic recovery plan with the idea of trying to make it clear and easy to read with the, what's currently going on with the city as it relates to COVID and our response. It's 10 pages long, but only four main sections. There's kind of a purpose and context of why we put this plan together, and then the fiscal impacts that we're experiencing right now at the city. What those impacts have to do with our services is the third. And then the last is getting to economic recovery. So it's pretty straightforward messaging. It's presented to you tonight as a draft. As with so many things right now, we're trying to move fast because either the spread of the virus or its impact on our financial situation requires it. So instead of a long process on this, or that could have taken quite a while, staff put this draft plan together in a little over a week so we could get it out to you as a draft and our community and our workforce as quickly as we could, and then get comments on it. Our intent is to take any comments that you have, any direction that you may have, and then attach it to our annual budget, which we'll be bringing to you in June. So it would become a final document at that time. I'm going to review just the first couple pages of it and then turn it over to the city's Finance Director, Nadine Hayde. The first couple pages state the purpose and provide the context for the rest of the plan. The context is obviously the coronavirus, which is having an enormous impact on our organization, not just financially, but also what we're spending time on as city staff. So on the second page of the plan, there's a list of the sorts of things we've been doing in our Emergency Operations Center. I already gave an update on where we're at earlier on tonight's agenda, but this just has a quick glance of a number of different sorts of things that we've done in the Emergency Operations Center, or the EOC, over the past nine weeks. I'm really proud of this particular page because you see how the San Rafael City Council and city staff are helping in so many different ways in our community, whether it's caring for kids with their parents, working in hospitals or other essential jobs, or with our businesses, putting together the grant program that the mayor and vice mayor were instrumental in leading, helping at COVID testing and surge planning, helping with food and shelter, and other ways assisting our vulnerable populations, having a focus on equity and providing equitable access to information, such as through our Canal Neighborhood Wi-Fi program. And then all the different things that are going on at City Hall, we were trying to do a good job before the coronavirus of putting, making We were trying to do a good job before the coronavirus of putting, making our services available digitally and online. And this just made it absolutely necessary to do so. So there's a lot of work going on in that area now that you can do so many more things than you could in the past by just going to our website. So that's kind of the overall purpose of the plan and the context of it, of why we're seeing kind of the financial impacts that we're seeing. And I'm going to let Nadine go through more specifics on that. And I think she may share her screen and go through the plan in a little bit more detail. So Nadine?
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I'd like to go over the budget and fiscal impacts that COVID-19 has brought upon us. Through June 30th, 2021, we're currently projecting that we'll experience losses of about $12 million. The total percentage reduction of our general fund revenues is approximately 14% when compared to the fiscal year 19, total revenues for the general fund. To put it into perspective, we are currently expecting to lose $12 million, which is roughly half of our Police Department General Fund Budget for one year, two-thirds of our Fire Department General Fund Budget for one year, or our entire Department of Public Works General Fund Budget for one year. Another way that you can look at this is theoretically, if staff were asked to make all $12 million of reductions in expense cuts to non-safety departments, that would mean closing down the libraries, eliminating all recreation activities, cutting community development services, and we still would not get to the target amount of $12 million. The bulk of the losses that you can see down here pertain to sales tax, sales and use tax, which is 71% of the $12 million, transient occupancy tax, which is 10%, and which we believe will suffer due to anticipated, reduced anticipated levels of travel and therefore more occupancy. Business licenses is revenue volumes are expected to decrease and therefore the revenue, the business license amount due to the city would decrease as well. Permitting franchising, other investment earnings of about 13% of the $12 million. And this is essentially the accumulation of many smaller revenue generating sources. We're only showing the effects of this for fiscal year 19, 20, and 2021, but we do expect this to linger on into future years. And at this point, because we have no commitment of federal aid, we're not including it in this document. So when we start to look at, and let me make this a little bit bigger, cost-cutting measures. We're considering, we've moved forward with a hiring freeze for non-public safety employees, and we expect that to be about 1.4 million. We are discussing furloughs for non-public safety employees of $700,000. We have implemented a voluntary retirement separation program, with which the goal would be to obtain $600,000 in cuts. We have one-time funds available to us from prior years, which amounts to 1.1 million. And we expect to incur additional budget reductions throughout our department of 4.2 million. With all of that, we would still expect to use our emergency reserve of up to about 2.5% a year for two years, or the total amount of 3.7 million. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Christina Lilovich, who'll be going over recovery strategies and city services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Christina Lilovich. I am the Assistant City Manager. And I, I'm going to be speaking to the actions that we've taken thus far and those that we plan on taking in the future. As Nadine mentioned, we immediately implemented a hiring freeze in March, and there are 14 vacant positions. We halted all non-essential spending and projects. We had a planned compensation cost of living, a compensation increase for executives and mid-management and for bargaining units that don't have closed contracts. That was planned for July 1st of the new fiscal year, which we've eliminated. At the last council meeting, you, your council authorized two voluntary programs for employees. Nadine mentioned the voluntary retirement separation program, which we've seen some strong interest in in the last couple of weeks. That opportunity will, will have a full sense of that savings. Fairly soon, that program closes on May the 22nd, and we're in the process of evaluating what we think the savings will be. We do think we're going to hit the target that Nadine mentioned. We also have offered a voluntary work hours reduction program, where employees can voluntarily take time off without pay for a certain period of time to help with cost savings. And then we are actively seeking support through our local legislators and the California League of Cities on advocating for any financial assistance and recovery we can get. We are also discussing with all of our bargaining units the mandatory time off and furlough program that can achieve up to a 5% pay reduction. So those conversations are ongoing with our labor groups right now. We will be continuing to work with our local businesses. Jim mentioned the Marin recoveries effort and trying to get curbside retail happening again today. So we're going to continue to work with our businesses. We will be, oh, pardon me. For the budget coming forward in June, we do have a proposed reduction in the emergency reserves of up to 5%, which Nadine also covered, which is approximately $4 million. We will be, sorry, Nadine, could you scroll your screen in a little bit? I'm having a little bit of a hard time. Thank you very much. In addition, we're going to continue to gauge the public's interest in revenue, new revenue sources. So we'll be bringing forward a paramedic tax proposal for you in coordination with the fiscal year 2021 budget. Over the last year, we've been evaluating the master fee schedule to bring some of our fees in line with other similar Bay Area agencies. And we will continue to work with all of the cities and towns in collaboration and partnership. Again, the Marin Recovers effort and those industry advisory groups are going to continue to work over the next coming weeks to, to support our entire community and economy and reopening. So, next page. So we wanted to give you a picture of how all of these reductions and efforts will impact city services. So we wanted to frame for you, rather than go department by department, we thought we would look at the five categories that the city council adopts its goals and strategies every year in coordination with the budget, and I'm going to just speak briefly to some of those. The extent to which our services will be impacted is not fully realized. And that's primarily because we're still in this evaluating what, what will these voluntary programs achieve for us? And, and then we'll be determining in the coming weeks and months what further cuts and reductions will need to happen. So if that furlough program is implemented, that will mean that we will have to close down city services for our 13 calendar year, calendar days during the fiscal year 2021. In the council strategy and goal area of neighborhood and economic vitality, we already struggle and housing is such, such a huge issue in Marin and in San Rafael. Unfortunately, due to the economic hardships that many in our community are facing due to COVID-19, we, we expect to see increases in the number of individuals experiencing homelessness. We also, in this goal category, expect that there will be reduced processing times for permits and development applications. In essence, wherever we're, we're reduced in financial resources as well as people resources, things will take longer and be deferred, unfortunately. So we do also have a number of initiatives to implement that we have committed to the communities, like our climate action, our climate change action plan, which is as important as ever with wildfire season on the horizon. In our quality of life goal category, we focus on arts and culture and recreation. And one of the things that we're looking at having to do is reduce operating hours at the branches. It's possible that our, our recent success of the pop-up at North Gate Mall may be at risk if we have to make further staff reductions. In addition, we really rely on full cost recovery to provide our quality, high-quality recreation program. So some of those may not be able to, to operate. This is also where we spend a lot of time in resident and community engagement. And one of the effects of the service reductions and vacancies is that a number of our staff will have to be redirected to provide critical direct services to the community, which makes it harder for a lot of our both staff and employee engagement activities, as well as those efforts in the community. Under public safety, we have, we will be needing to make deferrals in both vehicle and equipment purchases in the fiscal year budget in both police and fire. In addition to that, there will be less resources available for important professional development and training for our police officers and firefighters. One other thing to mention in the Police Department is the Police Department in their budget cut proposals is proposing to put the cadet program on hold, which is a significant and important strategy in bringing forward up-and-coming talent. So that's, that's really unfortunate. We'll have to be putting that on hold. Under public assets, we will have to continue to defer maintenance on critical infrastructure, like our San Rafael and Terlinda Community Centers, as well as, we won't, we just simply won't be able to accomplish as much under our capital improvement program in this coming year. And then our foundational services category, we have a culture initiative, which has grown and made a lot of progress in the last few years, particularly as it relates to increasing and enhancing service delivery, modernizing our services through technology. And unfortunately, again, due to the need to have key staff be reprioritized and refocused on, on other, backfilling for our vacancies, it, it will result in, in some delays in our ability to move our technology, technology and modernization enhancements forward. So the balance of the, of the plan is going to be presented by Danielle O'Leary, who's our Economic Development Director, and she's going to talk a little bit about our local economy. Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. We can see you. We can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Apologize. Okay, Christine, thank you, and Nadine and Jim for starting off this great report tonight. I'm going to talk about the recovery piece and really want to break it down into three key areas for our economy. Economic development and all of the city in general has been focused on immediate disaster response for our first piece of the recovery. And what that looked like was working with Mayor Phillips and Vice Mayor Collin, the Chamber of Commerce, the BID, the County of Marin, and a lot of different private citizens and businesses to launch the Small Business Disaster Relief Fund for COVID-19. We were able to get that off the ground in less than a month and issue a good portion of small business grants to our business community in a variety of different geography areas, Terlinda, downtown, to East Francisco, West Francisco. All of our businesses in our commercial districts were able and afforded the opportunity to apply for this grant. We also worked on creating a, I would say, a business database that really helped our business community understand the vast amount of resources that were available to them. Those included the Economic Injury Loan, the SBA program, the Payroll Protection Program, that was a federal program in partnership with the Treasury. So as staff, we really tried to kind of aggregate that data, provide it in digestible chunks, and get that updated on a continual basis to help our businesses access what resources were out there. We also tried to create an online database of businesses who were open and considered essential during this first phase of the shelter in place, so that we did have economic transactions continuing in our community. The second phase that I think we're entering into now is really kind of the short-term midterm, where we're looking at how do we reopen our economy in a very careful and thoughtful and strategic way. And we're partnering, as Assistant City Manager Christina Lilovich said, in the county's Marin recovery efforts. And our first step was to partner on the Retail Industry Working Group. So Christine and I were able to work with the county to bring a variety of retailers together to talk about what does it mean to open for curbside delivery. I will note that the way it works is that the state issues, you know, their parameters and the counties, each one of them can customize their approach. We can't be less strict than the state, but we can be more strict than the state. So really trying to help understand what works for Marin businesses is the focus of Marin recovery and helping open up our business community in incremental stages. We're also continuing to support development projects that are important to our community, the Goldstone Development Project on Forest Street and other key commercial projects, such as North Gate and Marin Square. And we're just starting to look at what revenue streams. It can't all just be about the collaboration focus, but what revenue streams that we have existing and what can we do to increase or improve those revenue streams. An example of that would be our cannabis licensing program. Is it time for us to look at increasing license amounts? We're exploring different license types that can help with revenue generation in the immediate term. And in the long term, we're focused on developing an economic development recovery strategy in partnership with our community. Once we really kind of move through, I think, a good portion of these reopening phases, I think we need to come together as, as a community and look at how do we best position San Rafael post-COVID-19. And with that, I would like to say that Jim, Christine, and Nadine and I are available for any questions that you may have, and thank you so much.
Well, first, thanks, thanks, everyone, for preparing this report. It's really remarkable. I mean that seriously. It's, it's over a short period of time. The steps that have been suggested and recommended to get us in the right place economically is remarkable. And the way you've presented it, I think, is just, just wonderful because it's understandable, it's clear. And one thing I particularly appreciate is it doesn't pull any punches with regard to the community. Here are some things that are going to occur. None of us like it, but it is a fact, and I think we need to be open to the community that we too, along with virtually everyone in our community, is taking a pretty substantial hit. And, and yet you've addressed it, and I think you've addressed it in just a very professional manner, each and every one of you, and thoughtful, and yet creative as well. And it does require everybody within the city, city employee force to join hands on this to make it, to make it work, which is going to be trying for all of us. But the way you've laid it out, I think, is truly remarkable. So that's my, my opening comment. What I particularly liked was the way you, on the first page, had projection reductions over the next 16 months and put it in perspective to the Police and Fire Department, Public Safety, the two of them, how pronounced this is compared to those vital services, and then even Public Works, which is critical as well. We know that that's a big budget item. And in perspective, this is a substantial, substantial hit, not unique to San Rafael, but certainly indicative of what we're faced with. So I thank everyone for, for putting this together. Like I said, it's truly remarkable and so professional. It's, it's, it's really staggering. But it's comforting to know that we've got such professionals dealing with this issue. So for myself, and I think our community, really want to thank each and every one of you for taking this on head-on quickly and very professionally. So with that, I'll open for comment, and then we'll go to the public. Any comments? Vice Mayor Collin.
Yeah, I echo everything the mayor said. I couldn't have said it better. The work that has gone into this is top-notch. And I think you said, Mayor, it didn't pull any punches. And absolutely, I mean, it is factual and is honest, and it is outlining what faces our community ahead. So I absolutely echo everything that was already mentioned. So I, I absolutely echo everything that, uh, was already mentioned. And I also appreciated that context piece. It's always hard when you hear numbers, like, what does that mean in the big picture? Uh, so thank you for making that. So I could understand it. Really appreciate that. Um, I did have one question. It, so the mayor and I both actually got to look at this, uh, prior. Um, and I'm, Han brought it up before. Under the, your, um, I think we saw the public safety and talking about, for example, the, the cadet program would have to be eliminated or possibly go to the side. Is that something that could ever be done cross-jurisdictionally with other, uh, cities and towns? Because I know cadet programs, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they're different by community, but I'm trying to think of, are there ways that we can partner with other jurisdictions in Marin County? Uh, like, that would be one, for example, or GPW, like paving contracts. I mean, how are we looking at those kind of, I, I don't know if we've ever really done that before, but really grouping with other jurisdictions to, um, I don't know, to, to have some of these programs go forward? Or to save, in terms of paving contracts, to save money? So that would be my only question.
Yeah, um, I can jump in and, and respond to that. I think, um, it's a great suggestion, Kate. And the Marin Managers Association, which is all the city managers of, of, um, Marin, uh, are, are looking at all the ways that we could potentially help each other as jurisdictions, either at shared services or, um, economies of scale, any way that we can help support all of Marin and our own budget savings. I think, um, Chief Bishop would want to speak to the item, uh, related to the cadet program and that it's, that one in particular is a key strategy for us to recruit and retain our talent through that program. So, um, she might not be as willing to want to share in that one, but absolutely, we will continue to pursue any avenue that we can in that regard. So thank you for the suggestion.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I too think it was a terrific report, and I very much appreciate the hard work that went into it and the very clear exposition of the problems we're facing. Since, uh, we as a council have had more exposure to the earlier part of the report and we or I have had less exposure to the latter part of the report, and I'm alluding to Danielle, uh, the portion that you presented on, I do have a question for you. And that is, um, given the work that you've done, and along with others, of course, and given the conversations you've had with our merchants, with the stakeholders that are such an important part of our downtown community, can you paint, are you in a position at all to paint a picture for us as to what the, uh, Fourth Street corridor may look like as we emerge from this? In other words, are you getting early signs that storefronts may not reopen? That is in a material way, where the businesses are becoming so impaired by the shutdown that there's in real jeopardy of resuming? I ask this because it's the question that's constantly being asked of me, and so I'm passing it on to you because you're probably in a better position to respond than I.
Sure. Thank you for the question. Um, yes, I would say that our downtown merchants are struggling, and we will see store closures. We've already have heard of a couple closures that are permanent. So right now, what we're witnessing is temporary closures all the way through Fourth Street. There are going to be a fraction of those that are going to be permanent closures. I think that the sooner we can get to reopening retail, even at reduced occupancy, it helps with merchants and their cash flow. I think that's an important milestone that we need to look forward to as Phase Two evolves. And I think that, um, the next piece will really be the restaurant and the dining piece. And there's the tension between bringing customers in, maintaining social distances, defining what the role is of the consumer, the business owner and the employee. And I think the more that we can make those clear, consistent, and doable, we will have a better time coming out of the recovery. The longer this drags on, um, in some respects, I think it's going to be harder for some of the small businesses to come back. We have heard that some of our small businesses did receive the payroll protection plan. And I think some milestones that we need to look, look to are when those plans start to expire. So really, the end of this month and next month will be a good litmus of, can they bring back their employees and, and partially reopen in a way that is more activated than curbside?
If I could, one more follow-on question for those who, perhaps in the audience or members of the public who are less aware, can you speak a little bit about the efforts underway at the stakeholder level and, um, within city staff to, uh, find ways to use our outdoor areas to enable businesses to come back? So as we look at this next stage, when, for example, in-store dining may be significantly curtailed, but outside dining provides adjunct space and breathing room, no pun intended, for the, uh, um, restaurants? Uh, how do you see that proceeding? And can you share a little bit of that with, uh, with folks, uh, members of the public?
Sure. I will say that those decisions and details are being worked on collaboratively. All Marin, um, you know, cities are sharing good, uh, good information about what they're thinking about. Mill Valley, um, Novato, San Rafael, we're bringing the Public Works Department, planning, parking, and looking at every way that we can redeploy our assets in a way that helps our businesses get back into the reopening phase. I think that utilizing outdoor space is going to be an essential component into getting businesses reopen. Data suggests that it's safer for people to be outside, um, enjoying dining or shopping than being indoors. So I see this as a real practical step that we need to consider. I will say that, um, I've been greatly pleased with our parking team, who are looking at ways to be flexible, our Department of Public Works, about really, how do we look at this streetscape where the cars have been and look at ways that we can be creative to help businesses meet that social distancing need? Because without that, they're going to struggle to maintain viability.
And I'd just add on that, uh, and Danielle's been instrumental in this as well. And that is, we're considering and have had discussions with the Chamber and others about, uh, closing off Fourth Street at least one day a week, uh, provide further, uh, outside exposure, let's say, for all of our businesses. Uh, that'll come back to us to make that decision, but it's being discussed. That would be all the way down West End, so, uh, something to consider. Along with other things, but that came to mind, certainly. And, and thanks, thanks, Danielle, for that. Why don't we go to, uh, the public now, if we could? Lindsay? Anyone?
If you are on the telephone and you wish to provide public comment over the phone, please press star nine. And while I wait for those to press star nine, I'll request that anyone watching YouTube submit their comments on YouTube now. I do see one caller, so I will go ahead and, when you receive the notification, you've been unmuted, please begin to speak.
Hi, good evening again. This is, uh, Bill Carney. With Sustainable San Rafael. Um, we also want to commend, uh, Christine and the whole staff for a very clear and concise and comprehensive plan, and also for the, uh, competence, um, and compassion that's shown, uh, in the, in the preparation of it. You know, I'll state the obvious. I think these dedicated public servants are, are really an essential asset for the recovery of our community's economic well-being. I was looking to, more my own expertise, uh, on the heels of the COVID crisis, COVID crisis, um, the, the approach of another summer wildfire season, uh, with its attendant threats of extreme smoke or heat events that could occur at any time, underscores the vulnerability of our community to multiple disruptions. Climate change has, in fact, placed this city in an ongoing state of emergency, which prompts us to suggest that we can perhaps recover from the current crisis in part, at least, by preparing for the next one. Uh, in particular, Sustainable San Rafael encourages residents, um, all of us to engage in a series of climate-safe sheltering actions, um, that we're publicizing, uh, to meet the threat of climate impacts, uh, both by improving immediate living conditions, um, and also by reducing the carbon pollution that's driving climate change. We encourage, and I've provided a, an attachment of those, um, those potential actions that we're encouraging. We, we also encourage the city to join us in promoting, uh, such household investments uh, in greater liv- livability and perhaps even survivability, uh, which could also help stimulate the recovery of San Rafael's important economic sector of home improvement, construction, uh, appliances and materials. Um, there are state, uh, and PACE financing available to help with that. And we also urge the city to work with the county to assure that other work is cons- that, that such work is considered essential, uh, work. If we do get additional federal, uh, recovery funds beyond those needed for, uh, essential operations, um, we ask that additional incentives for such sustainable building improvements and infrastructure, uh, be considered, um, along with training and employment programs for those most in need in our community, uh, to perform essential community work, such as assuring the cleanliness of downtown sidewalks and reducing wildfire, uh, hazards in our hillside open spaces. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your comments, Bill. Anyone else?
If you are on the telephone and you'd like to speak, please press star nine. I see no virtual hand raised at this time. And let me go to YouTube. We have received a comment. Name withheld. Please comment on any movement on opening or allowing restaurants to resume business and any timelines considered. Thank you.
Okay.
And... That concludes public comments.
Thank you very much. And with regard to the, uh, the public comment, uh, no one is more anxious, I would suggest, for our restaurants and other businesses to open than, than we are, at the same time, uh, dictated to some substantial degree by the county and, and the state. Uh, so we are chomping at the bits like everyone else. Um, having said that, uh, let's return, close the, uh, public, return to comment. Grab some motion by councilmembers. John?
Yeah, just have a really quick comment, um, following up on Councilmember McCullough's, um, question in regards to the, what we see as the potential impact, future impact, current impact of our downtown merchants. I, I, I want to make sure that we don't forget about those in Northern San Rafael and East San Rafael as well, um, and that we're not, and that we're expanding our focus. I, I, I might have missed it in your report, and I apologize for that. But, you know, a lot of what we get in the city of San Rafael comes from areas outside of downtown, even though downtown's the most visible. So I just wanted to put that out there, make sure that we're, we're thinking about Northern San Rafael, East San Rafael, and all of San Rafael when, when we're addressing these situations.
An excellent point. Vice Mayor Collin?
Yes, thank you. So, um, as was mentioned, I'm on the steering committee for Marin Recovers, and I would just want to mention to the public that's out there, the Marin Recovers website is the county website, and you can go into different industry areas, I, I was thinking of the restaurant question, and you can ask for updates directly to be emailed to you. We're posting them. Boy, the staff's doing an incredible job of posting them right away on our city website, but it is a way to kind of cut out the middleman. So I just wanted to put that out there to anyone who might be listening, that they can put their name in there and get the emails as soon as the information changes. Thank you.
Good, good point, and thanks for adding that. If there's nothing else, is there a motion with regard to this?
I would be delighted to move that we received this truly exceptional report.
Second. And moving to the second row call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Item carries five, uh, zero. And as I mentioned at the outset of this item, uh, we'll take a short break since we started at 5:30, and it's now nearly 8:30. So break until 25 after 8:00. And Lindsay, maybe you can help us with that?
Yes, if everyone could just cut their videos and mute their microphones. We will resume shortly. We're ready to go live.
Welcome back to the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, 19th, 2020. We'll move on to agenda item six B, which is Plan Bay Area 2050, Priority Development Areas PDAs. Ask for staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. I am going to start with some background and history on priority development areas that also have historically been known as PDAs. Then I'm going to turn it over to Ethan Guy, our principal analyst, to summarize the report that's before you this evening and the more details that are structured in the report. I have to say that initially, I took pause at the thought of revisiting this topic, which was last discussed by the city in 2013. However, a lot has changed since 2013, which makes the discussion timely and worthy of consideration. So Ethan, if you could move on to the next slide, I'd like to provide some background for context. As you all know, we're working on our general plan 2040, which is due to be completed and released this summer. During the course of this preparation process, we reached out to all of the neighborhood associations and groups to get feedback on the neighborhood element. As you know, we have a neighborhood element in our general plan that addresses all the neighborhoods and all the different nuances in neighborhoods. And what we asked for was feedback on that element and what we could update. What we received in response was a request by both residents of the north San Rafael area and also the Canal neighborhood to include in our updated general plan, programming for funding and committing to completing a deeper dive planning effort for those areas, much similar to what we're doing in our downtown area, either a specific plan, a precise plan, or a neighborhood plan. Now, the timing and programming requires funding certainty and outside funding sources or grants. As you know, whenever we've prepared special plans, they've always involved money from outside sources. For example, our downtown precise plan, which is being prepared as part of our general plan 2040, was funded by a ONE Bay Area grant, or O-BAG, as it is a priority development area. Next slide, please. So PDAs are priority development areas. They were established with Plan Bay Area in 2007. Plan Bay Area is a regional plan that covers all of the Bay Area counties. And what the PDA does, it was set up as a planning and funding tool to address growth in concentrated areas and funding for planning and other infrastructure improvements. It was initially defined as a one-half mile radius around rail stations or transit center or stop. And in 2009, the city nominated and received a designation for a planned development area for both our downtown and the civic center area. And these are the areas that are concentrated around the two smart stations. And subsequent to that action, we received and fully funded an O-BAG grant to complete the downtown and the civic center station area plans, which were completed in 2011. The civic center PDA was rescinded in 2013 due to a large amount of controversy that was raised about the extent of recommendations that were included in the civic center station area plan. And consequently, with that rescinding, the station area plan recommendations were scaled back, and those scaled back recommendations are being included in the general plan 2040. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ethan, but I do want to make a couple of comments. I want to comment that a lot has surfaced very quickly on this topic and the call for new PDA nominations. We were able to reach out and conference with some representatives from north San Rafael and the Canal neighborhood in a very short period of time. I have to say that those conversations actually resulted in a lot of good questions, which is why you have a very long staff report. Consequently, there were questions raised, and there are topic areas covered in the report that are either directly or indirectly related to priority development areas, which is why the report is so lengthy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ethan.
Thanks, Paul. So as Paul kind of gave you a little bit of a background as to how we got here, kind of how we started off the presentation is why should we consider a PDA again, and what has changed since 2013? So I think the first most important thing is that the definition of the PDA has changed and it's broadened. So it's not just an indiscriminate half-mile circle around a rail station. It gives jurisdictions much more leeway in really kind of drawing those boundaries that we would want as a PDA. As part of the PDA process, it will not impact local zoning or land use authority and will not impact or prejudice the general plan 2040. The state law that created the PDA-type program, the Sustainable Communities, says explicitly that these efforts cannot impact local zoning or planning. Additionally, there's no obligation to meet or zone for Plan Bay Area growth estimates. So as part of this process, Plan Bay Area, as part of the Plan Bay Area 2050, they'll run their own analysis on assumptions and growth estimates. We don't have to plan for that as part of the PDA process. Additionally, as we discussed tonight, too, we're in a housing crisis, and really working on this is really in line with the city council directions to find opportunities to address. There's been a few mentions back of our January reports to try to identify some of these housing constraints to development. This is one of those naturally follow-up items onto this. And then finally, as we've spoken about, there is going to be a new RENA. It's going to be bigger than past years, and using something like a PDA will really help us plan for that next RENA. So one of the big questions that came out of the process of speaking with the community is what does a PDA designation commit the city to? So the first step is, once a PDA boundary is approved, it's going to be included in the Plan Bay Area 2050 analysis and planning, which starts in September. That's a separate process that MTC is undertaking. But, as I mentioned before, by state law, Plan Bay Area 2050 is strictly a strategic document, and it shall not require a city's land use policies and regulations, including its general plan, to be consistent with the plan. So there, Plan Bay Area 2050 is strategic planning. It is not a requirement to the city to meet what they're using as part of Plan Bay Area 2050. Additionally, nominated PDAs that get a new PDA boundary, they must have a specific or precise plan adopted by 2050 to maintain their PDA eligibility. If you don't have a PDA precise plan by 2025, it's not like there's a major penalty to you. It's just that you lose access to those designated funding and resources that come with being a PDA designation. Finally, that specific or precise plan does not need to plan for Plan Bay Area 2050, and it does not need to be limited to the PDA. So for example, a precise plan for Terra Linda using PDA-designated funding, it could use that funding as long as the Plan Bay Area includes the North Gate PDA. Now, as part of that process of developing the specific and precise plan, the jurisdiction has strong leeway to change or rescind the PDA boundaries at any time. Changes would be reflected, though, in the next PDA update cycle. So one of the other big questions that came out during our conversations is there's a lot of acronyms. Housing planning in California is really archaic and convoluted, and it's hard. So we tried hard to try to show those major distinctions. So you may hear us say PDA, which is Priority Development Area. That's a long-range planning and aspirational document. It's voluntary, and it happens every four years. There's RENA, which is the Regional Housing Need Allocation. That's created to ensure jurisdictions meet housing need. It's a requirement by state law, and it happens every eight years, and it's distinct from the PDA process. And then finally, there's something called a Transportation Priority Project, or a TPP, which happens in a transportation priority area, a TPA. And the purpose of that is to reduce GHG emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. And it applies to projects that fall within a designated area, and it allows access to a streamlined SEQA review. The streamlining is very minimal, and projects would have to meet very specific requirements in order to access any SEQA streamlining. So there are some similarities between the programs, mostly in their methodology. So a PDA and the RENA process, they use what's called the TCAC Opportunity Maps and Indicators. And what that is, it's 21 distinct indicators looking at economic development, housing development, environmental and development, as well as educational development across all these areas to help identify high resource, low resource, in areas experiencing active gentrification. Additionally, the PDA process and the TPA process use transit proximity to help identify their areas. So that's that half-mile relationship, half-mile radius from the rail station. There's different agencies, but the main thing is that the PDA, since it's voluntary, you can change it throughout the process. Jurisdictions can continue to change those boundaries. In many instances, the hope is that the process of developing a precise plan using PDA funds brings in the community to help figure out and more, take a scalpel to those planned areas. Finally, penalties for noncompliance. There is none for a PDA. For the Regional Housing Need Allocation, there are limitations that are placed on local oversight if you don't meet the RENA. But for the TPP, it's not applicable. And then finally, jurisdictions that have a PDA in their boundaries are able to access specific funds and designated funding through MTC and ABAG to help fund specific and precise plans, to help fund transportation projects. But additionally, there's also funding at the state level to help prioritize projects and planning that fall into a PDA-type boundary. So there is access to quite a bit more funding through a PDA nomination and designation. So one of the other big questions that came up is, is why are we just hearing about this now? So the call for letters of interest, which is the document that the city would be sending in to nominate a PDA, that came out on March 11th, which was the day after the city had a proclamation of a local emergency. It was two days before we activated our EOC, and it was just before the shelter in place order went down. So part of why we're here today is we wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for both the council and the community to put input on the letters of interest. And so what that letter of interest process is, is MTC and ABAG, they're accepting local nominations of PDAs through this process. A submittal of a letter of interest is required by May 31st, and it must be signed by the city manager or planning director. But there's a second step, which is the authorization resolution. So while the city manager or planning director can submit the letter of interest, it still needs to be authorized by the city council. And that doesn't have to happen until June 30th. So what that allows us is a period of time between today, if we decide to move forward with submittal of a letter of interest, and the authorizing resolution, which essentially makes that submittal official on June 30th. So there's time for us to also conduct additional community outreach and conversations. Mostly, the idea around the letter of interest is to get a submittal announced, so we can continue to move that process along. Once a letter of interest is submitted, it'll be considered by the MTC-ABAG board for approval. So it's not actually a PDA until it's approved by MTC and ABAG. And that won't happen until likely August or September. Finally, once an approved PDA has been approved, it'll be included in the Plan Bay Area 2050 final blueprint analysis. There's links to all this in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions about all the details as well. One thing to note is that in local jurisdictions that have nominated less than 50% of the PDA-eligible areas, and as you can see, the map on the left shows those PDA-eligible areas, the dark red are existing PDAs. So we have to nominate 50% of that or more. Otherwise, MTC will apply their own specific density and land use assumptions on the remaining transit area and high resource areas, separate of the PDA process. So by nominating a PDA and using up to 50% of our PDA-eligible area, we're able to kind of say, rather than you using a separate allocation and prioritization process, we're going to use that PDA designation to tell you where we want you to run your analysis. So why we're here is that staff does believe that PDAs for Canal and North Gate are worthy of consideration. What I'm going to do in the next few slides is present several options, mostly to simplify the discussion. But city council, you can choose different boundaries. We've had some comment come in from the public about specific areas. We have that option. The options are mostly just to help with the conversation. The boundaries are not required to be limited only to PDA-eligible areas. So as you'll see when we get to the Canal, we've also included Canalways, which isn't technically a PDA-eligible area. And then finally, I just want to hit on it again, why staff is pushing for consideration of a PDA, is that it does allow access to designated funds and resources available to facilitate specific plans and extensive community input for PDAs throughout the process. So the first PDA to discuss is the Canal PDA that we were looking at. So this includes areas east of Highway 101 encompassing the Canal neighborhood. So this is all eligible area, not just what we're, the options are. But that also includes Spinnaker Bay Point. It includes portions of Point-San Pedro Road along the canal, and then areas west of Highway 1 along Anderson Drive. The first option that we include in the staff report included areas mostly east of the 101, and had major boundaries of the canal waterfront in the Canal neighborhood, and include the Canal property, Canalways property. It did not include Spinnaker Bay Point or areas west of Highway 101, and it also did not include the areas along Point-San Pedro Road. For option two, we took option one and included Spinnaker Bay Point, but we also included areas west of 580 and the 101, including Anderson Drive. but we also included areas west of 580 and the 101, including Anderson Drive. And for option three, it's same as option two, except we didn't include Spinnaker Bay Point or Point-San Pedro Road. So, for the North Gate PDA, the eligible area was a little bit different. So, taking a step back, the different colors, so the, the pink and the purple colors, those reference connected communities, PDAs. And the connected community is just a designation for how you become eligible area. And those are required, those are required because of the headways for the buses. So, I think it's a 15-minute headway for buses in the pink areas. The, the yellow and orange areas, those are eligible due to their transit proximity. So, you can kind of see along the upper north and the southern edges of the orange area, that's that half-mile boundary that was, that was around during the 2013 PDA. But, as you can see, it's a little bit more discriminant as to what is and isn't included. So, the North Gate PDA, the eligible area includes a large area ranging from immediately surrounding the Civic Center Smart Train and following the path along the Smart Train along Lincoln Avenue. It also includes North Gate Mall area in the PDA, which would be consistent with the general plan policies. And then also, Plan Bay Area 2050, they specifically identify transform aging malls and office parks and soon neighborhoods as one of their key strategies behind Plan Bay Area 2050. So, that would fall in line with the North Gate PDA. So, the first option that, that we include in the staff report was an area surrounding North Gate Mall. So, that included North Gate 3 and North Gate 1 Center, Las Gaienas Office and Gas Station areas. But it did include Mount Olivet Cemetery, the areas east of Highway 101, and the areas south and west of the Civic Center train station. Option two included option one, but it expanded to include some of the areas west of the Civic Center train station, but not including Mount Olivet Cemetery. And then option three built off option two, and it expanded southward to include that commercial corridor south of the Civic Center train station, along Redwood Highway and ending at North-San Pedro Road. So, that's a lot I threw at you, so I'm, I'm happy to take questions. The options for tonight, the first is, our recommendation is direct the city manager to submit a Letter of Interest nominating priority development areas for the city of San Rafael, and return to city council with an authorizing resolution before June 30th, 2020. And that, that was what I was describing at the beginning. It allows us to move the process forward through the submittal of a Letter of Interest. But we have an opportunity when we consider an authorizing resolution before June 30th to make changes, as well as to decide whether or not there are major changes that need to be made. The other option would be to direct the city manager with modifications, direct staff to return with more information, or finally, to take no action. So, that's questions.
Well, first of all, I think you've prepared an excellent report, once again. But I do have a comment and then a couple of questions. The comment relates, quite frankly, to what I think is a mischaracterization of the repeal in 2013 of the prior PDA, PDA in the north San Rafael. At least my thinking was, and I think it was conventional, that at that point in time, sitting on TAM, I was aware that the PDAs were funded by a particular amount that was then to be allocated to the various PDAs that existed, of which San Rafael had two, and there was one other within the county. So, with the elimination of the north San Rafael, it would concentrate, at least in my mind, in a more appropriate site, which is the downtown. So, we received the same amount for that particular site as we would have for both, and I think, or thought at that particular time, that was most appropriate. So, it wasn't a controversy or any of the other stuff. It was because I thought that it best suited San Rafael in terms of how it was funded, and I think Paul might be able to verify my, my rationale. And it certainly wasn't, you know, the half-mile circumference that was a deciding factor, but rather the, the reason I cited. So, that's the first thing. Second thing, I see what you've done with regard to the various options that we have. And frankly, I'm having a little trouble deciding, without, without fully appreciating perhaps the criterion that goes into the selection of the, of the described area, how one makes that distinction. For example, the North Gate, you have an extension on number, option number three, which seems most appealing, but it's just a reaction because it does cover more of the area near the Smart Station and the surrounding area. But I'd like to better understand the criterion used to designate the, the specific area, since it's not just taking a protractor and drawing a circle. How do you, how did you define the areas?
Because I'm mute. So, specifically with option three, it was mostly looking at where we've discussed in the past, including kind of the general plan recommendations. So, that was immediately why North Gate developed. Regarding the little spur down to North-San Pedro Road, the main reason is because there, there's a distinction in that being more commercial than the, the single-family home neighborhood right next to it. Additionally, on the map, it's hard to show, but on the map, it shows that there is a little bit of a 10-minute walkway or half-mile radius to the Civic Center. So, that has direct access, or could have direct access, to the Civic Center itself, to the, to the station itself. That was the main rationale. Outside of that, it was, it was mostly just to have more of a discussion about whether or not the pros and cons to a spur like that might, might arise.
Well, I'll let others comment, because I don't, I don't make the distinction, at least as clearly in my mind as I would prefer. I'm having some, some trouble making a decision as to which is most appropriate. But to back up for a half a second, there is quite a lot of community concern about PDA, in large part because of the exercise we went through with Paul, or alluded to, and, you know, a couple of years ago, 2013, 12 and 13. And it, it seems that the common, no, not common, it seems that the sentiment of many is that while you can say that this is not going to result in big government specifying how we develop our community, it sort of feels like it. Sort of feels like it because, you know, we have to put this together and put together a report. And, and by the way, the funding may be tied to transportation. And once they get their hands on this plan, who's to say that they're not going to dictate, as you suggested, if we don't be more than 50%, dictate how we develop our own community? So, there's some resistance, some reluctance to accept the concept of PDAs. So, I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit more, and then I'll turn it over to my, my fellow council members. Why you're convinced that this is not, I'll, I'll be a little derogatory. Why this is not first step and big brother to take over our planning process?
It's all good questions. So, there, there's a few kind of main things that to hit on. The first is that the statute that created the Sustainable Communities and the Sustainable Communities Plan states explicitly that they can't be used to impact local jurisdictions. So, in a hypothetical, a new state bill comes along that may say like, hey, let's use a PDA and change local zoning or something on, on that, that, that property because it's already designated. There's a few issues with that. The first is that PDAs are specific to MTC and ABAG. They're not, they're different in San Diego, they're different in Los Angeles. So, defining a PDA would be very difficult across jurisdictions. Additionally, it's a voluntary program. So, if somebody were to say, we want a PDA, the next day, the city council could choose to rescind the PDA designation and to get around that. So, that, that's kind of the, the high-level piece that I, I take away from PDAs themselves. Additionally, part of what the PDA is really trying hard to do is to provide funding to conduct community-driven policy and planning, because those are very expensive things. To conduct a specific and a precise plan is very expensive.
So, if they like it, they're going to fund it. If they don't like it, they're not going to fund it. So, that seems like some discretion is being exercised.
So, that's a great question. And part of kind of how the larger programs work, both at the state level and at MTC and ABAG level, is that it just allows you to apply. So, if there is discretion about whether or not they do or don't like that, they're going to have to go back to the specific criteria that they're using to fund. And so, that would be using the TCAC Opportunity Zones, using the resources and community, kind of, connected community criteria that they are having to designate the PDAs themselves. In, in that kind of example, it's, it might be good to use the difference between a TPP and a PDA, right? The TPP already exists. It's separate of this process, but they're using similar criteria. They, there's already access to those programs absolutely separate from a PDA, but they use the same criteria to define and don't define. The other example that I would use would be currently going through this process with the downtown precise plan. It's, it's going well. The community is putting their input on where it is. We've changed the boundaries of the PDAs to make sure that they're in line with what the community is. And we're also going through a community-driven planning process to make sure that we have that specific plan for downtown.
Let me just follow up a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to the others. How many other cities and towns in San Rafael have adopted this PDA plan?
That is a great question. I'm trying to pull up the map. I, it is... Let me see. Give me a sec to pull it up, and I can answer that question in a few seconds.
Okay.
Philips, if I may respond to your quest...
Of course, please.
Or not your, your question, your comment, going back to 2013, how soon we forget. And I totally agree with you. I do remember the discussion about the interest in taking the funding sources and concentrating them in the downtown area. Because at the time, the way that the financing was structured for transportation dollars was that 50% of the money allocated in the regional transportation plan for Marin County would go to designated PDAs. And I do recall that was part of the mix, and you know what? I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. It was one of those details I forget, and, but thank you for bringing it up.
And then, thanks to Paul for the clarification or the addition. Well, Ethan, I don't know if you're ready, but I've got to sort of follow up if, if you are. Okay, go ahead.
The, the answer is two.
Two?
There, there is one in the, it's called the Urbanized Corridor. It's near Mill Valley.
Right.
And then there's another one just outside, actually, of the Canal PDA area. It's mostly trying to address like Green Bray and the connection with the ferry.
So, if this is all it's cracked up to be, why are some of our compadres jumping on it?
So, there, there's concerns, right, with the number of acronyms, with the number of programs, with what does and doesn't qualify for housing. And also, anything that talks about and tries to speculate regarding land use is contentious no matter where you go. It is, to be frank, not easy, even for me, to follow all of the various rules and regulations, all the various policies that are, exist statewide. But what, what I do kind of rest my head on is that the, the state bill that created this explicitly says that this is, this cannot interact or replace local zoning or planning. Yeah.
Yeah, rules are to be changed, though. You know, they're not inviolate. Finally, and then I'll turn it over to the others. It seems that the positive, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the positive element of this is it might provide, and might, but let's say, provide funding for study within those two critical areas. We know that study needs to be, needs to take place in the canal and, and north San Rafael to see how they might both further develop to, to advantage the community. But, so I'm, I'm leaning, you know, back and forth, but I'm leaning towards that as being a positive element in my consideration. Is that, is that a fair concern, consideration or not?
I think so. And, and I think the, the other piece to that is that as part of that process, we can further refine any boundaries. So, we can go through a community-driven process to really think about what, what works and what doesn't work, what streets may not work, what other streets may not work. And the specific and the precise plan also does not only need to be for the PDA area. It can be for a larger area. I, I, I think there, there are kind of larger concerns about kind of what is a specific and a precise plan, and I'm happy to get into those as well, just because as part of all the acronyms that we throw out, we throw out a lot of different terms and names of plans and that sort of thing as well.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate your comments. It helps a lot. But let me turn it over to others. Councilmember Bushy.
Thank you. I'm, I'm the city council member assigned to the Steering Committee for the, for Plan 2040. And just last week, we received the initial report out from our precise plan contractor, and it was phenomenal. And so, that, to me, I think we need to remember what has happened since 2013. First of all, seven years have gone by, and during that time, we've had a PDA in downtown. And the only thing that has happened is that we got a significant amount of funding to undertake this precise plan for, for the downtown. You know, with Danielle O'Leary's report earlier this evening echoing in, in our ears about the importance of downtown and economic development, to have the, the additional resources for outreach to help us come up with the, with the design. Remember the pop-up design studios that were in the storefronts downtown? That was funded by, by the, by the OBA grant that came from the designation as a PDA. It brought forth new analysis by these, by these planners, and it allowed us to develop new ideas that we'll be bringing forward, but with the Steering Committee on, to the entire council. So, these are real concrete things, benefits that we have obtained from the PDA in the, in the seven years since we went through that. So, let's not live in the past. Let's think about all the benefits that we've gotten. But I know people are, are worried about it. So, Ethan, I want to make it crystal clear and, and emphasize this. It's correct, is it not, that San Rafael can walk away at any time from a PDA designation? And that serves as a safety valve. So, if anything goes sideways, new legislation, anything goes crazy, we can always walk away from that. Is that correct?
Yes, and I'm gonna, I, I need to put a caveat. So, yeah. So, when a, a PDA is approved, it will go to MTC for inclusion in the Plan Bay Area 2050. They're going to run their analysis. They're going to use that. Anytime we can remove the PDA and rescind the PDA designation, but once it's included in that initial analysis, we can't change it until the next round of updates, which is every four years. So, that's not, that's not to say that, that analysis isn't going to happen anyway, but it's just to say that we would be removing the designation of a PDA and then accessing the funds and the technical assistance. So, once it's approved, it, it goes into the, the analysis mode. They actually put it into a statistical software to run everything. That's why they have to, they need the boundary to put into the planning software. But outside of that, we can remove it, we can rescind it, we can do whatever we need, we can change the boundaries. It just may be a year or two before that gets reflected.
All right. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, and I'll just expand on what Ethan just had to say. Councilmember Bushy, that's exactly what happened last time, when the, the Civic Center PDA was rescinded. It eventually made its way out of the next update of the Plan Bay Area, but it was embedded in that Plan Bay Area until then. And it may, had no influence during that period on any, anything that we were doing in San Rafael.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Collins?
Thank you, and thank you, Ethan, for walking us through all those acronyms. And it makes me feel better when you say, even you have a heart. It's overwhelming for you, because I'm sure the rest of us have read through the report. And I know it is a lot of information for the community. And I was really heartened by what councilmember Bushy just said about the neighborhood plans. And I don't know if it's a question for her, or for Paul, or for you, that going through the general plan 2040 process, it seemed to me, what I was hearing from you all was that neighborhoods wanted that extra TLC or planning so that they could have... that neighborhoods wanted that extra TLC or planning so that they could have the type of development they want. And, and so one, if you confirm or affirm that that is what you heard, and two, what does the funding go to? I think there's a belief that if you get PDA, it's only looking at housing, but my understanding is there's also other characteristics that you look at within the development. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, I'm going to let Paul enter that one just because he's, he's way more familiar with the specifics of the precise plans.
I can't hear you.
Quiet. Okay. Absolutely. Yes. I would say if we, if this discussion was to be had, let's say, a year and a half ago, it probably would not have gone anywhere primarily because we did not, we didn't hear from, you know, these two neighborhood groups until the 2040 process where this whole interest surfaced. And finding money to prepare a, a, a larger scale plan that's far more detailed, like the one we're doing downtown, is very difficult to get. There are other sources out there that we've been tapping, as you know, Senate Bill Two, among other things. But actually, the OAB grants are the most guaranteed grants, if you've got a PDA, to be able to fund something as big as a specific plan. And that came about within the last, since last November, when we started talking with the neighborhood groups. So that is why it's kind of timely for us to consider this now.
And what we're being asked to consider, what we're talking about with the community tonight is a letter of interest, right? So it's a first step to a second conversation, to a third conversation. Is that correct?
That is correct. And by the way, a specific plan addresses far more than just housing or even jobs or commercial development. It addresses other issues that are typically covered in a general plan that including flooding, sea level rise, you know, if there are resource areas that are included in there. It, it looks at, it looks at a whole group of things, like what we're doing in our Downtown Precise Plan. So it's not all focused on housing.
So it looks at things like bike paths or other amenities that neighbors have talked about in different.
Right. I mean, wait, wait till you see the draft Downtown Precise Plan. There's so much information in there. And Councilmember Bushy, she's, she was involved with a webinar we had last week that just went over the table of contents. And there's a lot of information in there that goes far beyond just land use planning. So there's, there's some huge benefits to going in that direction.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councilmember Gallin.
Yeah, thank you. And Ethan, thanks for the report. It's always very detailed and very to the point. I really appreciate that. I, I think one of the things that we're facing here is obviously the timing of this. And it, it might not be the most opportune time, and I think that's, the majority of the comments that I've received are not necessarily completely opposed to, to this, but the fact that, you know, it was, it's, it's on the agenda for this week and there wasn't a lot of broad community outreach, especially with what happened in 2012 and 2013. I sat on the other side of the dais in the audience when that took place, living up in Terre Linda, and remember those, remember those conversations vividly. So I, I can, I feel for the constituents, especially up here, that are concerned about this, based upon the prior pieces. So that being said, we've, even though the request for letters of, of interest we received on March 10th, I believe you put out there, March 11th, as you said, this is a, a thing that takes place every four years. So while we might have received that initial thing, it, we've known about this for a lot longer. And if our goal is to obtain planning dollars, to be able to put in a precise plan for Northern San Rafael and also for the Canal, where it seems like we're, we're weighing this heavily on Northern San Rafael and not talking as much about the Canal piece. I don't know about other councilmembers, I haven't heard anybody from the Canal piece neighborhoods express anything other than that they're interested in this, from the, the small amount that I've, that I've heard from. So there is a, there is two sides to this, this, this agenda item. The folks in the North, it seems the majority of them are not supportive of this activity on this right now. And the folks in the South are either supportive or haven't, you know, offered up opinion on it. My, my question, Ethan, is what is the, what is the cost of a precise plan? So if we do this, what would we be looking for to do a precise plan in North Gate area and in the Canal? What kind of dollar amount would that be, would we be talking about for there?
So to use the Downtown Precise Plan as just an indicator, the cost of that plan's going to be about $650,000.
Okay.
So 600,000 of that is coming from OAB grants and MTC. So the cost to the city is about $50,000. That being said, Downtown, Downtown is very different from the Canal and very different from North Gate. But there's going to be kind of an, an initial level of service. So you might want to consider that a bit of a ceiling, but at the same time, there's not going to be, the floor is not going to be much lower than, than that $600,000.
And in terms, yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt Councilmember Gallin, but I want to add to that. The one, the one nuance to downtown is that it's being grouped with our General Plan 2040. So there is some cost savings associated with one piece of this that's not mentioned in that 600,000, and that's the environmental review part. We're doing environmental impact report for the general plan update. And because we've included a, a precise plan for our downtown area, we're doing a, a, a greater detail level of review for certain topic areas in the downtown area that are being absorbed by the EIR costs, which are not necessarily a part of that 600,000. So if we were to do a solo plan for either the North San Rafael area or the Canal neighborhood, we have to also factor in that we're going to need money for environmental review to, to make that worth our while. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that as well.
So it would be perhaps much more than 600,000?
It, it could be, yeah. I mean, it could, we're gonna, the fortunate thing with the General Plan 2040 is we're starting with a program-level EIR. So we would be able to, what they call tier off of it, and basically focus our environmental impact report on either of those areas, on something more granular for those areas rather than the, the bigger picture stuff. So that's the advantage, but it still would be costly, yes.
And, and Ethan or Paul, in terms of timing, obviously we've been working on a precise plan for downtown for a bit now. If we were to start, hypothetically say, we get a grant in January 2021, how long would you anticipate a precise plan to be completed through community outreach and, you know, committee level to present to the public for both Northern San Rafael and for the Canal? How long would that take?
Paul?
Sure. I, I would estimate based on what we're experiencing with the precise plan downtown, about two years.
Okay. So, so this, this kind of leads to my, 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 I guess, final question for now. Is there anything, you know, when we, in the staff report, it says we can come back with other suggestions? Seeing that we're getting opposition in the North and not really a whole lot of opposition in the South, is there anything that precludes us from designating a PDA in the Canal area, but not in the North Gate area at this time? Going for planning dollars there, focusing on that and running with that? And then with the Northern San Rafael group, you know, getting a lot more community outreach on what this means? I think a lot of the angst and anxiety that we're hearing from Northern San Rafael is that this was sprung upon them. These are the words that I'm hearing. I just found out about this last week. I couldn't read it in the staff report until Friday. I know you reached out to one group in, in Northern San Rafael, but that's not indicative of the whole, the whole piece out there. And, and I hear that. And, and I, although I know what you're saying, and I hear what's in the staff report, and I trust what's in the staff report, I don't see that it would necessarily hurt us if we took a step back, especially in these times where we're having Zoom meetings rather than public meetings. I would imagine if this was on a regular meeting in our council chambers, the council chambers would be quite full as they were, you know, seven, eight, nine years ago. So is that an option for us if we choose to do that? To say, okay, well, that's, we'll set a letter of intent to the city manager, we'll send a letter of intent regarding the Canalways and the Canal area, and for North Gate, we'll pass for right now. We, if it gets designated, if we get planning dollars, we work on a precise plan for there because it's going to be different than a precise plan for Northern San Rafael. We see how that goes. And in two or three years, when we're finishing that precise plan for the Canalway, we're right up upon the next letter of interest for the next four-year planning schedule that we can look and see what we've done in, in downtown, see what we've done in the Canal, and I think have a lot more information and answer a lot more questions for those folks that are, that are, that are concerned about this. So is that a possible, I guess, solution or compromise to some of the comments that we're hearing from the public?
Yeah, so in, in the short term, the immediate concern is the need to submit a letter of interest by the end of May. So we would need to submit two letter of interests for the two new PDAs. So that, that's the immediate deadline that's coming up is, is May 30th, or May 31st. We would still, that would, those submittals would not be official until the resolution or authorizing resolution is heard by City Council. So there, there's a period of time there between the submittal of the letter of interest and, and the, the authorizing resolution is adopted. So that's one thing. The second piece is I had mentioned that note about the 50% PDA eligible area. So what that means, and we, we tried to describe it a little bit in the staff report because it, because it's, it's very nuanced. So essentially, MTC and ABA is part of Plan Bay Area 2050. They have already put together a list of assumptions and strategies based around how they're going to run their analysis. Cities that don't nominate 50% of their PDA eligible area citywide, when they reach that, if they don't get to that, they're going to apply those analyses to the remaining area until they get up to 50%. So for this city, for San Rafael to reach that 50% area, we would need to nominate a, about 1,000 acres of land. So we're able to get to 1,000 acres by using both Canal and North Gate. If we were just to choose Canal, we would have to nominate quite a bit of area. We can still get there, but it, it would be a very large area in the Canal to, to reach that 50% threshold. If we don't reach that 50% threshold, MTC and ABA will still use those analyses and those strategies as, for this cycle. And that's likely to be done in the North Gate area around the Civic Center smart trade. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that answers my question. It's, I, but it's, to the extent is, we still have the, the option of just choosing one over the other. And, and following up at least on something that the mayor said about our surrounding neighborhoods and our surrounding jurisdictions, it doesn't sound like anybody else is concerned about that. Because I would, I haven't heard of, does Nevada have, are, are they doing this? Is Corvada doing this? And if not, they're subject to the same 50% regulation that, that we would be in. It doesn't seem to be on their radar, or maybe I'm just missing that.
So it, it, they, they are not currently, as of that, what I know, submitting letters of interest for their PDAs. But the same 50% or less does apply. So those same density requirements would still be applied. As, as to why they are doing that, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember McCullough, did you have a comment? I don't see your.
Well, just a very quick question. Ethan, in your staff report, you indicate that certain areas are not, do not meet the criteria for PDAs. And among them are areas that are subject to, kind of forget how you put it, but sea level rise generically. If that's the case, and if the Canal is very much subject to sea level rise, how is it that the Canal neighborhood is eligible? Or did I miss it in the staff report if you made that clear?
You did not miss it. So a, a part of the, the larger sustainable community strategy is to try to address the threats of climate change. So greenhouse gas emissions is the main one. So I don't know specifically the level of criteria necessary for the sea level rise, whether or not they used the 50-year projections or the 100-year projections for sea level rise. But part of, and this has been going around since it was created, they do look at areas at threat of sea level rise specifically so that they can plan for those areas. So the fact that there is housing in an area that is at risk of flooding or is at risk of sea level rise is part of the reason why there is interest in planning for that because of the potential displacement in 50 years or 100 years.
I see. Thank you. That's it.
And thank you so much. Why don't we now turn to the public for comment? Anyone?
Yes, there are. If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press nine, star nine, sorry. Please press star nine. Additionally, I will request public comments be submitted on YouTube. And please note that if you would like your comments on YouTube to be read into the record, you need to say "public comment" in caps, and then introduce yourself prior to your comments. And now looking at our telephone line, I do see some hands raised. If you receive a notification that you've been unmuted, you're welcome to speak for your two minutes.
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Linda Jackson. I'm speaking as Program Director of the Aging Action Initiative. I support both the PDAs, which are areas of San Rafael which deserve and need the attention and these millions of dollars of investment that have been expended thankfully in downtown San Rafael. I want to especially address the North San Rafael Letter of Interest. There are thousands of older people in Terre Linda and surrounding neighborhoods who want to stay in the community for the rest of their lives. But this hope relies on the ability to have affordable home, health, and community-based care. And this requires careful planning. Several of the letters talk about, ask the questions that you have just asked about the planning process. But without careful planning, this area is going to be unable to change for the better, just as it has not changed for the better in the last seven years. The status quo means that the North San Rafael commercial area, which has long been recognized as having tremendous potential as a town center, is going to continue to be stretched into the future, outdated, underutilized, and vacant. Given the unexpected two years of evolution in our local economy and the budget and housing deficits facing San Rafael, it's imperative to take this very first step of indicating with a letter, interest in meaningful and inclusive planning for the future for both of these areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers.
Hi, Bill Carney again with Sustainable San Rafael. We've always supported PDAs as an excellent way to bring outside cash into the city in support of community-based planning and improvements where they're most needed. That's true now more than ever, and we urge you to initiate that, this, this process. Specific to North Gate, we would recommend that you look closely at option three as being the most comprehensive, while also not encroaching on existing neighborhoods. So it strikes that, that balance. Both these areas are literally calling out for effective planning. We've, we've heard that in quite a bit in the last few months. And PDAs bring the resources to, to, to the city to answer that call, and in fact fulfill the, the promise of, of local control in dealing with these issues. And it's only by exercising that local control that I, that ultimately we're going to avoid more heavy-handedness from, from the state. I also would point out that in North Gate, a big thing that's changed and is of immediate concern is the prospect of COSCO coming. That really galvanized many in that neighborhood who had not been previously involved to seek a comprehensive planning process. And again, this gives us the resources to do that. In the Canal, resources are needed both to maintain our large stock of affordable housing and also indeed to plan for sea level rise. We know that that's going to take a tremendous planning process going forward, and these resources could help to, to, to fund that, that process. So we encourage your taking this your step. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Hi, this is Kate Powers. I share the thoughts of the communications that have gone to Mayor I share the thoughts of the communications that have gone to Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Gamblin. I've been following Plan Bay Area 2050, and I just want to tell you a couple of things that have worried me about the PDA designation with a specific plan. One is, there's a document on Plan Bay Area website that is resources for SEQA streamlining, opportunities, and exemptions. And the city has used SEQA exemptions recently for the Four Point Sheraton project and in other projects to streamline approval and not have to go through the environmental review process to determine impacts and mitigate impacts. On this, in this document, specific plan exemption project checklist says an adopted specific plan with a certified EIR, and the project must be consistent with the specific plan and EIR, including any mitigation. It's not clear that a general plan EIR will be specific enough for projects to really know what's going to happen in the next 20 years in North San Rafael. We have floods, we have wildfires, we have sea level rise, we have COVID right now. So the city has been, I mean, the North San Rafael has been wanting some sort of implementable form of the North San Rafael Vision Plan, looked at the general planning process as an opportunity to have a neighborhood plan or a community plan. It wasn't clear when a specific plan was first suggested, what would be the constraints of having a specific plan and that it would have to go through this PDA process. And there were just a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. A recent presentation by Plan Bay Area 2050 defined a PDA as locally nominated space within an urban footprint with significant housing and job growth. The community wants to have opportunity to look at how we should grow, not just how Northgate should grow, but how Terolinda and its neighborhoods and the areas that are increasingly congested on and off the highways, how this whole area is going to look in the future. A recent communication to MTC said, planning grant programs, it was a complaint that MTC should consider changes to the planning grant programs to increase oversight and accountability because in prior instances, grantees have been awarded and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in regional plans for planning purposes only to disavow the final plan based on community opposition to increase density near transit. And then talked about some sort of clawback obligation on the part of grantees that do not dub final plans. That was just a comment. But in a recent meeting on May 8th, the MTC is, was, is in the process of updating its transit-oriented development policy to enable it to be linked to the Plan Bay Area 2050 as a policy tool to reinforce transportation and land use objectives outlined in the plan to, and to determine how funding will incentivize or require compliance with new policy objectives to achieve intensified land uses around the transit. I also was at the planning, the General Plan 2040 Steering Committee meeting, and the plan for the downtown plan, the downtown precise plan near the highway is four six feet.
I'm sorry, one moment. My timer is not being heard. I just wanted to make sure that you were, the time of two minutes passed about 30 seconds ago, and it's not coming through. I apologize for that.
Okay. So they just said, the planning for the downtown precise plan is six-foot tall buildings with twenty, two-story, six-story buildings with two-story height limits. And that just seems, you know, we want to be careful about what we're planning for. The community wants to have some really good input about what we do with environmental review.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, and there are no other hands raised. If you are on the telephone and would like to provide public comment, please press star nine. We did receive YouTube comments, so I'll go ahead and read those. Kathy Minovi, resident of San Rafael Meadows neighborhood. This is to express support for Northgate PDA Option 1 to include the PDA eligible areas surrounding Northgate Mall, Northgate 3, and the Four Points by Sheridan, and extending to the intersection of Los Colinas Avenue and Manuel T. Freitas Parkway. Map 7 proposed Northgate PDA Option 1. I am not in favor of options 2 and 3. Option 2 is poor because of deficient roadway access for mass exit the area in an emergency fire evacuation and the like, and the potential traffic conflicts with the planned promenade on the dead-ending Marydale Road that runs between Smart Station and Northgate 3. Option 3 is a poor choice because the South Marydale, because South Marydale is already lined with existing multifamily condominium buildings with inadequate parking, and there are two large projects underway, a senior assisted living complex and 49-unit condo building accessed by or directly on South Marydale Road. The Northgate Mall and other areas delineated on Option 1 present the best opportunity for a PDA because of the excellent existing roadway access on Los Colinas, Northgate Drive, et cetera, and direct access to existing RIN bus transit stops and an easy walk or bike ride to the Smart Station if it in fact survives. My name is David Smith. Can the PDA Letter of Interest be a placeholder to save the opportunity and be rescinded later if desired? Given the short time to fully investigate now, to Councilmember Gamblin, the PDA may happen every four years, but we're now facing a very different situation than four years ago. If this can be rescinded later, what is the downside? Emma Sturtevant, public comment, how does the current proposal for COSCO at Northgate complement or contradict the goals of the PDA Letter of Interest for Northgate? How does the current proposal for COSCO at Northgate complement or contradict goals of the PDA Letter or Interest for Northgate? That comment is repeated. How does the current proposal for COSCO and Northgate complement or contradict the goals of the PDA Letter of Interest for Northgate? Leila Hill, if San Rafael walks away from a PDA designation, what happens about funds already received? Do they have to be paid back? What does it mean for areas designated high or highest resource in relationship to housing required in a PDA? Flooding, sea level rise, what assessments have been done? Can you describe the kind of planning process that would take place using the funding from a PDA in Northgate, Terolinda? Who would conduct the process and what would be its goal? If San Rafael does not LOI for 50% of eligible PDA areas, what do the density requirements just mentioned, just mentioned apply to? Density requirements for what? Housing, what kind? Donnie Zarski, I missed exactly who is the funder of the PDA program. Follow the money, don't understand where funds are available from. Is it from the state? I missed where the funds are coming from. Flooding, sea level rise, what assessment could have been done? What assessments have been done regarding flooding and sea level rise? I would also like to better understand how public input has been solicited. How is this communicated to the taxpayers? Shirley Fisher, how will the community have inputs into defining the PDA boundaries? Do the boundaries have to be decided before the resolution is adopted? How will the community have input into defining PDA boundaries? Do the boundaries have to be decided before the resolution is adopted? Grace G., to submit an LOI, do the options boundaries need to be defined or is that later? John Reynolds, whatever can be done to plan for, provide funding for affordable housing development in and beyond the Canal should be done. PDA designation may contribute. I'm a resident of the Canal, a member of the MOC, pushing for, planning for, funding, pushing for, planning for funding, providing affordable housing for Canal residents and low-income people. Michael Lorenz Delotti, public comment, hi, Michael Lorenz Delotti here. I have had the pleasure to attend Bosses del Canal Working Group for 2040 Planning. I am not sure they are aware of this deadline. Rachel Kurtz, thank you for the detailed presentation. Does a PDA assignment have any relationship or weight to future SEQA requirements, or will the SEQA reviews be project-specific? Scott Frerich, I fully support Councilmember Gamblin's comments to pass on North Terolinda PDA for now due to resident concerns for short period of time for community feedback. Downtown PDA is different from North San Rafael due to the number of residents so close to the proposed PDA. Further, Terolinda is a bedroom community. We have not been informed of this prior to last Friday. This is area, this is area is active. As evidenced by last fall's Northgate discussions, I am a resident in Terolinda, and I am concerned we are trying to push through a proposal without understanding it fully. Additionally, information needs to be gathered, presented prior to voting tonight. Eric Bolus, I live in North San Rafael. I am in support of LOI. It does not commit us to the PDA with limited notice. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can accurately summarize the perspective of North San Rafael residents. And that concludes our public comments on YouTube. And I still see no hands raised. I would like to note that there were some duplicative comments in my reading. Those were just because they were published multiple times, and we read them exactly as they are submitted when members who are watching on YouTube submit. So thank you.
And thank you, Lindsay. Quite a number of good questions were asked, and I would therefore ask either Paul or Ethan to respond.
I can start, because I've been taking notes here. First question, would a PDA or a planning, a plan for the area contradict or complement like a COSCO proposal? The whole purpose for a plan, to do a plan for an area is to identify what land uses you want to place in that area, which could be a COSCO, or it could be more commercial or different types of commercial or housing. So it wouldn't necessarily complement or contradict, rather it would be part of the planning process. The second question that came up, funds already received, would they have to be returned if we rescinded a PDA at some point in the process? I don't know about now, but let me tell you about what happened back in 2013. We had a, an OABAD grant that funded $250,000 to do the station area plan. We rescinded the PDA, but we made use of that plan, and we didn't have, we were not required to return any of that money. In fact, we asked the question, and we were not required to return it. Where do the funds come from? Typically from the state of California, and I believe that some of it maybe didn't come from the federal government, but that's all filtered down through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission as part of the money that they get for the regional transportation plan. So who would conduct the process? If we were to do, let's say, a specific plan, it's the city. We're the lead agency, no different than what we're doing right now in the downtown area. PDA boundaries, do they have to be resolved before the resolution is adopted? I will defer to Ethan on that one because I think the answer is no, but I may be wrong. Relationships to, two more, and then I'll turn it over to you. Relationship to SEQA. PDAs have no relation to SEQA. It's a funding tool. There are these other acronyms that were mentioned that are kind of intertwined with the PDA. Those things are linked to SEQA. It's a funding tool that's used, in this particular case, to fund the preparation of a specific plan that would be subject to SEQA. So it would be money for us to get in order to complete that plan and complete the SEQA document, but would not have influence on the SEQA document. And Ethan, if I'm incorrect in that assumption, please let me know, but that's how I've always known the PDAs to work.
I'm not going to challenge you on SEQA. You're the SEQA expert. On the boundary requirement, we have to submit a boundary with the Letter of Interest, but that boundary won't be finalized until the resolution. So we'll have to put in essentially a placeholder boundary if we submit a Letter of Interest, but we'll be able to come back and change that with, at the resolution period of time. We talked to MTC about that. They understand that that's a potential. One question that I also noted too was on the density requirements through Plan Bay Area 2050. Plan Bay Area 2050 is a strategic document. So, and as I've mentioned, the state law, there can be no impact. What they use is strictly for them to be able to plan to figure out greenhouse gas emissions. It cannot be used to change local planning or zoning. Those density requirements are just for Plan Bay Area 2050. When it comes time to do a specific plan or a precise plan, we don't have to pay attention to those at all. Finally, there was a question regarding public input on the process to date. So we've mentioned that a little bit in the staff report, but I also want to flag that MTC and ABA have also been doing their own public process throughout this entirety. So they've been doing this now for about two years, and they, so every few months they put out a new update, or they do additional work. So this isn't necessarily the first time that PDAs have been discussed as part of Plan Bay Area 2050, and it's definitely not the first time that Plan Bay Area 2050 has been discussed at the regional level.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. I guess I would like to ask Jim if he has comments, and I would like to ask, I think, the staff as to the options themselves of what you presented, three for each locations, what your recommendations are. Still having some trouble distinguishing in a meaningful way, other than just lines on a piece of paper, the consequence. And I'm also interested in the comment with regard to COSCO. It seems to me that this planning process, I'll comment further with regard to planning itself, which I'm generally in favor of, but it seems to me that COSCO may be a done deal by the time this planning process is complete. So in any case, if I could, those are my questions, recommendations. And Jim?
Mayor, I'll start responding to those and ask if Paul or Ethan want to add anything. As it relates to COSCO, we've never received a formal application from COSCO. We don't have an application for COSCO. There was a preliminary application that they got some feedback. So there wouldn't be anything, as you say, the timing is dependent upon when we would get an application, where we're at in the planning process. Is the plan complete by then? Is it not complete? It'll be up to the council, if we're in a planning process, like a specific plan, it'll be up to the council if you want to review developments as they come, or if you want to put them on hold until after the specific plan or precise planning process is over. As you'll recall, this happened recently with the precise plan going on downtown and the Seagate project moving forward, and the council elected to continue to process that project and not make it wait for the precise plan to be done. So that's the answer, is COSCO. For the, for the boundaries, I think what we were trying to do with staff is put in some options for you to get reactions to, and we thought that between your own reactions and the public comment that you heard, you might be leaning towards one direction or another. Really, it's, the different options just take in larger amounts of area. And they, as Ethan said, if you have a direction that you're thinking tonight, we can, we can be putting that in the, in the resolution, but we can still make changes to it up until the point that you approve a resolution, should you wish to do that next month. And then we could even make changes to it as well. If we even get into a planning process and decide that the boundary needs to change, we can do it at that time. So I think that there, it's, the main point was, are you looking for something as small and focused as possible, or are you looking for something that is larger and really takes on more of the space that you'd want to consider for development? So it's, it's up to, up to your own desire on that.
Well, I understand the, I understand the roles. Having said that, you guys have been working on this for some time, and certainly highly regarded and respected by, by all of us, I would suggest. And so therefore, I would be interested in your recommendation. It can be accepted or rejected, but I'd certainly be interested in it. I'm also curious about MTC. You made reference to the outreach that they've been doing for, I think you said, two years, which I find interesting. Because if their outreach had, had been occurring over that period of time, and yet you're saying that virtually no other cities in this county are accepting this concept, there's something that's missing here that I'm, I'm not connecting with. That makes no sense to me at all. You were talking about funding for planning. You're telling me that the other communities are not interested in planning? in planning? I, I, I don't think so. You're not telling me that, but inferring. So, if they are, and if MTC has been out beating the bushes, so to speak, with regard to this plan for two years, I'm still befuddled as to why there aren't other cities in Marin County that are also in favor of this. I'm, I'm just curious. I don't know if you have a comment on that or not, because we talked about it a moment ago.
Yeah, um, I share your befuddlement. I, I, I am not totally sure. Other counties throughout the Bay Area use regular access of, of this program. Just look at the Tri-Vale cities. They've, they've used this to develop quite a few PDAs in both Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton. San Ramon has also used it quite a bit, as well as Walnut Creek, Lafayette, and Redwood City. There really is a, a difference, I guess, in how Marin cities have been looking at the PDA process. And I'm not quite sure what the answer to that is.
Yeah, I, I can, I can respect that. It just seems very strange to me. And I'm not saying we're going to follow them. On the other, contrary, I'd suggest we lead, but also, I'm curious as to what their thought process was. Either rejected it because it's too, too involved, too, too whatever, difficult to, to comprehend. And we've got other smart folks in other county, or other cities. So, I don't know if they've rejected it, or they just aren't pursuing it. I'm, I'm curious about, about that. Other comments, and then we'll all conclude. Councilmember McCullough?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief here. I, I see very little downside in proceeding with the letter of interest, and only upside. For one, the action that we take in giving direction to proceed with a letter of interest is far from irrevocable. And moreover, we'll have many steps along the way, even after the resol, before and after the resolution, before and after the PDAs are approved and selected. Before and after we embark upon a planning process, we'll have plenty of opportunity to engage with the community on what an eventual PDA might look like, or whether in fact a PDA is in the undesirable for the two specific areas in question. So, from that standpoint, I see no downside and only upside. As to the two areas, it is no secret that North Gate Mall has been struggling for years. Its future is very much in question, and its viability has been in doubt for quite some time. No better example that, of the need for strategic planning is what happened when Costco submitted its conceptual application. People came out of the woodwork on both sides, but many of the people who were concerned about Costco expressed their concern in the context of, where is the plan for this area, and how does Costco fit into it? Well, I think we're, we're attempting to answer it by saying that if we, in fact, pursue a PDA, we might very well get to a planning process that includes the community and puts together a vision where it might be a post-retail vision, because by the time this gets done, Costco may well have moved on. They may never submit a development application. In which case, we're wondering, what is the future of the North Gate Mall? And without a planning tool and funding for it, we may never know that answer in a truly engaged, community-focused way. As for the canal, I think we all know that the neighborhood in and around the canal desperately needs the kind of planning resources that have been delivered to other parts of our community. It's time we did something, and if we have the opportunity to obtain the funds and do this work, then it would be a real opportunity missed if we don't move forward now. Mostly, I'm convinced that what we do today by way of giving direction does not break faith with our constituents, but rather reassures them that we're looking ahead, and we're trying to plan ahead, and bring them into the process, and ensure that whatever the future holds, it's going to be one where their interests and perspectives are taken into account.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I agree absolutely with everything that Councilmember McCullough just said. I have a proposal for a way that we can temper our response to this in a way that takes into account what we have heard from our constituents. In the case of the canal area, we've had no opposition. Councilmember McCullough is absolutely correct. That area has been crying out for additional planning resources. I would propose that in the canal area, we take option three, which is the broadest possible option, and move forward with that in a letter of intent. In North Gate, on the other hand, we've had some of our constituents tell us that they have misgivings about this process based on its history. I would suggest that we go to the opposite end of the options, and that is take option one, which is the narrowest option presented. In that way, we'd have two PDA areas. We'd be covering the amount of acreage that we need to, to cover, and we would be responsive to the particular voices coming out of each of those neighborhoods. So, that's my proposal. Canal, option three. North Gate, option one.
And, and thanks for specifying that. Appreciate it. Let's see, where are we at? Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah. I want everyone to know that I, I'm not against, you know, planning and, and living in the, in the neighborhood that is garnering the most what appears to be opposition to this. I see it every day. I see what's happened in North Gate, or what's not happening in North Gate. I see the development that, that could happen, and I hear from my neighbors, people that I, that I see on the street, and people that I coach their kids, that tell me, you know, what, what is Terre-Linda and what is Northern Centerfell going to look like? And we can't really determine that if we don't have a, an engaged populace telling us what they want. And we can't really get there if we don't have the capability and the funding mechanisms to do that. So, I'm not, I'm not against that at all. I think we're, we're, I've been very consistent over the last six years on the council, is when large items like these come up, that the more notice that we can have, the better for us all. The fact that this has been every, an every four-year cycle means to me that, that we probably should have been talking about this in the fall of last year, or in the summer of last year, as we headed up to this point where we knew, we might not have known it was going to be on March 11th, but we knew that there was going to be at some point a request for letters of interest, and that we could have had an active engagement with the community that they're asking for, to get that input. I look at this, and all the information that's provided and everything that I've read says that it's kind of a no-brainer. Why don't we do this? Why don't we figure out what's going on? And we, you know, there's really not a downside, as Councilmember McCullough said, at, at this point. My fear is the unknown, and I think that's what a lot of folks are, are, are putting out there, is they, they're just afraid that we approve this, and oh my gosh, this, we missed something in the small print, or a state senator passes this bill next year that completely, you know, locks us into building a whole bunch of stuff at North Gate. I think that's what the, the concern is, is we just don't know to 100% certainty that, that we are going to have this plan put in place, and we're going to be able to control everything, and no local zone is going to be taken away from us. And that's the fear. And we could have addressed that had we had these conversations over the last six months coming up to this point. And while I know we have a timeline in front of us now, and I know it's something that we need to do, obviously, over Zoom meeting is not the best way to do it, but it is what it is. And we're, there's no guarantee that, although we can knock on wood and hope that's not the case, that if we were to wait two years, that we wouldn't be in another Zoom meeting format. So, we just have to accept the fact that we're there now, and we have to make these decisions now, and the city moves forward now. So, while I disagree with the way, not in a disagree, but I, I wish there was a better way that this had been brought into us with a lot more time to be thoughtful about this, and to engage more people in the process. I think we can, we can move forward with this and have discussion at our next meeting, at our next meeting, and as more stuff comes out, and we can reach out during the next two to three weeks to four weeks to engage with those folks, and, and find out more about their concerns, and, and address those at that time. You're on mute, Gary.
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor Collin?
Thank you. Well, I loved going, well, last behind my colleagues, because they were all very well spoken. And thank you, Councilmember McCullough, for starting us off and really encapsulating it. I mean, we, we all want what's best for Centerfell. And I think all of the emails that we got were really people caring about it. To John's point, to Councilmember Gamblin's point, they were concerned maybe about what might or might not happen, but they care. They care. And we all really want the right kind of development. We want to have the right kind of conversation. And to do that, we need funding. It was kind of the chicken and egg thing, right? In order to have all of the broad community support and the broad, deep conversations to figure out exactly what that would look like going forward, we need to have the funding to support that, the, the processes. And this is a funding tool. I'm, I'm very much convinced by, you know, Ethan, thank you so much for all that detailed, you know, and acronyms and everything else, that this is a funding mechanism, and we need deliberate planning. We can't walk backwards into good planning. It has to be deliberate and strategic. And I really appreciate Councilmember Bushy's eloquent way of addressing the map. The mayor had talked about, you know, how are we supposed to figure out the map part of it? And I, I shared his concerns, and I think that is a good way forward. So, thank you to staff for bringing it forward, and in spite of the conversation and what we went through in 2013, recognizing this is an evolved funding tool that could really work for our community going forward.
Thank you. And I, I too thank everyone for their clear thought and conclusion. It appears to be conclusion. I, I think it's founded. It's, it's remarkable we were able to go through this, in something of a expeditious manner. For me, it's, it's, quite frankly, it's pretty simple. I'm in favor of planning. I think it's in our best interest to do so. I think if you want to point to, to the one area that might have some reservation, that is Terre-Linda or North Centerfell, there's probably no other part of our city that needs planning more so than now in that particular area with North Gate and some of this smart and some other things that are happening in that area. So, I do think it merits planning. And to me, this, this apparently will provide some funding so that we can do that and do it well. So, I'm, I'm leaning in that direction. I'm also persuaded by the fact that Ethan, you've done a fine job, of course, Paul, without exception does. And I'm, I'm led to conclude that we, as we go through the process, recognizing John's points, Councilmember Gamblin's points, with regard to be sudden, somewhat sudden, they dropped upon us, it does seem that we, if we get further down the path, and it's not quite what we expected at this point in time, we can reverse our course and, and go a different direction. But at this point in time, I do think it's, the funding is a driver, because let's face it, the economic times we're going through now, we're not going to have the funds to do it. And we're just not, as a city. Sorry, but that's the case. So, I think it's in the best interest of the community to, to move forward on this, as you suggested, to provide us with the funding capability that's necessary to, to do this in a well-thought-out manner. So, I'll be in favor of doing so. With regard to the, the particular options, I'm still wrestling with that, I'll be honest with you. I mean, Mary Beth has made a, a good proposal, although with regard to the North Centerfell, I think with smart being what it is, it would be, it would be hubris to plan for, for that mode of transportation that's potentially significant to the area. So, I would like the staff to help me decide between option one and option three with regard to North Centerfell. I see merits in both, but still trying to decide. So, maybe you can shed a little bit of light, and then we'll go to vote. Paul?
Okay. I think what's interesting is, we got comments from Kathy Minovi, who lives in Centerfell Meadows. And I think she stated it very nicely. Option one is probably the best option for us to consider. When you take a look at the other two options, you've got almost appendages to the boundaries of that area that really don't even connect in terms of the roadway network, or any sort of land use pattern, or any sort of zoning consistency. Option one for North Gate, to me, seems like the best option with some additional considerations that were brought up in some of the letters that we've, that we've heard. Regarding the East Centerfell area and the canal, I, I believe that in this particular case, I think Councilmember Bushy's points are very well taken. The broader area is probably the best to consider, because there's so much going on in the East Centerfell area. It's not just the canal neighborhood. We have most of our services that are in that area that serve the county at large, where you can't go anywhere else to get those services. We've got sea level rise. We've got other things going on in this area that are worthy of a bigger, sort of a bigger footprint to, to take a look at. So, I think, I think if you want to hear my opinion, that, that's my opinion.
And I appreciate that, and thank you. Ethan, it looks like you might have a comment.
Yeah, the, the one thing I, I would just add is, once we released the staff report, we did get comments back in terms of the boundaries in the canal neighborhood as well. And there, there were several comments about extending it to include more of Anderson Drive, as well as including Woodland and Lindaro. So, I, that would just be the, the one amendment to that, is those were recommended after we released the staff report, but before tonight. So, that would just be my one recommendation, is to be able to kind of extend some of those based upon public comment.
Presumably, we can do that even after this evening, if we so decide.
Exactly.
Okay. Councilmember McCullough, you have a follow-up comment?
I, I do. I, I, I want to make a suggestion. While I agree with Mary Beth conceptually, that is, for the North Gate area, we'd make it the smaller of the maps, that is, option one. I think that for the canal area, rather than picking option three, which is the largest of the maps, that I, I am a little more comfortable with option two, which specifically includes Bay Point and Spinnaker. And my reason, and I'm assuming it's the reason why the map was drafted and proposed to us, is that Bay Point and Spinnaker are entirely and exclusively single-family homes. And since the purpose of a PDA generally is to find ways to create more dense housing in and around greater, or transportation nodes, I'm not sure that, that including historically and exclusively single-family home neighborhoods within such a planning area is entirely appropriate. We're not doing it in any of the North Gate maps, so to do it in the canal map doesn't seem consistent with the planning exercise.
Paul, you have a comment with regard to that point?
Did you say my name?
I did mention your name. Yes, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember McCullough's point is very well taken. I, I think, given those are planned communities, and they're fairly recent planned communities, there's no reason for us to include them in that, in that area as well. So, I think I, I would agree with his, his conclusions.
May I follow up with a question, Paul?
Absolutely. Yeah, sure.
Can we create a sort of option 2.5, on where we build on option two to extend it further into the woodland and area on the other side, so that we increase the size, but not include on Bay Point and Spinnaker?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. That sounds great. Mr. Mayor, when you're ready for a motion?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the question. I'd seem to have merit. Is everyone ready for a motion? In which case, Mary Beth, you're on.
Okay. I move that we accept the report. I want to get back up here. And, hold on. It's a long report for us to accept. I move that we accept the informational report of proposed party development areas, and that we, oh, where do you say what you want us to do? We want, we're authorizing, direct the city manager to submit a letter of interest nominating priority development areas for the city of Centerfell, and return to the city council with an authorizing resolution before June 30th. And that the letter of interest include the North Gate Priority Development Area Map Number One, and the Canal Priority Development Area Map Number Two, expanded to include the woodland area.
Second?
Is there, thank you. Move in second row call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I am at R. Curry's 5-0. Thanks, everybody. This is an interesting one, let's say. And take it to the staff. Good job. Now, let's communicate out to the community. Now let's communicate out to the community exactly what we've done. You know what I mean? So anyway, uh, and therefore we shall move on to Measure A Work Plan and Preliminary Capital Improvement Program. I'm sure this will be a short report, right Bill?
Uh, Bill, some issues here in the mail.
It's not working.
We know Bill's had some technical difficulties tonight with his computer, so it's, yeah.
I didn't mean that short.
Maybe Ethan can give his report as well.
Hunter, good evening.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor and Council-
You may be the main man here.
I promised to keep this brief then, uh, and, uh, right along. I appreciate, uh, your patience here. This evening, I hope everyone can hear me.
Yeah.
I'm grateful to be with you, uh, virtually, I do have Nadine Haidt, our Finance Director, who will be co-presenting with me, uh, here at the end of this very brief presentation. I'll go ahead and share my screen, um, just so you can see, we will quickly motor through, um, let me go back to, let me go back to that as I share my screen.
There you go.
I'll see that at this point. Um, this evening we come before you for our, our annual update on the capital improvement program. This is a three-year program, fiscal years 2021 through 2223. Uh, briefly, we, this year we did have a fairly large working group, um, very much incorporated the principles of together San Rafael as we collectively worked, uh, with a number of members from various committees, or not committees, with departments between the city manager's office, fire, police, parking and others. And the, the goal was a collaborative effort in which we could come together, prioritize projects and come to some sort of, uh, conclusion as to which projects to propose. And that is what is now, uh, in our draft CIP that is presented to you this evening. Uh, for the public and for you, there's a recap. What is the CIP? It is a three-year planning tool in which we identify capital improvement projects that, uh, staff and others propose to move forward. Uh, it takes into account, uh, funding opportunities, it takes into account, um, a variety of criteria that I want to very briefly review with you this evening because we've changed, uh, a number of elements in the CIP this year from prior years. Uh, the process this year was, um, very iterative. Uh, we met with the directors, staff met with, uh, the working group, uh, we refined, uh, these various goals and criteria. Prior years, we had six categories in which staff were able to rank projects. We have felt the need to go ahead and condense that, so we've reduced that down to four. And that's what is presented in this table here. Column one is labeled health, safety and liability. Uh, another goal is priority initiative, another category, time-sensitive funds, and then lastly, maintain it or enhance, uh, functionality. Um, in concert with that, another change was giving a weight to each of these categories. We felt like we really wanted to make sure that the highest priority projects surfaced to the top. And to do that, we kind of left what, uh, the model that we had built upon in years prior, in which all points essentially in each category were weighted the same. Uh, this year, what we have is a weighted category, so health, safety and liability, for example, is weighted at 35% and therefore projects in that category tend to surface, uh, higher or score higher, uh, relative to the others. Uh, time-sensitive funds is more kind of black and white. Uh, typically it's earmarked for, um, projects that have federal funding in which there's milestones that we need to meet in order to continue to utilize the federal funds. Uh, locally funded projects then rank low in that category simply because there may not be, uh, an emphasis behind spending those funds in timely fashion. Um, the next three slides I have are predominantly, pretty much photos. I wanted to highlight several projects, key projects that the city has, uh, embarked upon over the past few years and have come to completion. First and most notably, we have the Public Safety Center downtown, which is right around the corner from completion, uh, as well as, uh, Station 57 is shown here in the upper left-hand corner. Uh, other notable projects that have been brought to conclusion include the Francisco West Multi-Use Path, which is Phase One. Uh, noted also is the Larkspur Extension, the Quiet Zone and all of the improvements that the city, uh, embarked upon to ensure that we didn't have the train, uh, honking its, or, you know, blowing its horn across various crossings in Southern San Rafael. And then lastly, another major one for the city is at Pickleweed Park in which, uh, staff were able to, um, on a kind of a slim budget, renovate the park, we removed a number of old pieces of equipment. And here you can see we had, uh, we've had just great success partnering with the community on this one, it's been a lot of fun. Upcoming construction is something that, uh, we are about to embark upon a season in San Rafael that, uh, at least in my nine-year, 10-year here at the city, uh, I haven't seen something quite like this. Uh, Third and Heatherton here noted in the upper left corner is about to begin construction later this week. Uh, we're excited about this one, it's been a long time coming. Uh, we'll be updating some of the signal equipment and then in, uh, installing a new crosswalk on the east leg of the intersection. Uh, in concert with that, this evening, Council already approved, uh, unanimously the Francisco Boulevard sidewalk project. That is a major win, we have $6 million in federal funds, uh, and we're going to be getting, uh, started with that here in the coming weeks, just as soon as a contractor uh, come to conclusion on, uh, signing contracts and, and some office matter work. But we're excited to get that going and renewing our public outreach to that extent. Um, the following two projects listed here are both out to bid, uh, seeking, uh, soliciting contractor bids at this time. In fact, the Smiths Ranch Road resurfacing project, uh, that, uh, those, uh, bids come back later this week, so we're excited to get that project underway, it's been a long time coming. Uh, the residents and those who live out, uh, in West County and other locations there off of Smiths Ranch Road, uh, very much would appreciate the potholes disappearing. So we're excited to, uh, finally move forward with that one. And then Phase Two of the Multi-Use Pathway, um, which is noted in the bottom right, and uh, we'll be coming back to Council in the coming weeks to work, uh, a construction contract for that one as well. Other highlights, I want to make sure that Council's aware during 2021, uh, we're resurrecting an old project, Bungalow Avenue, and listening to some of our constituents out on the street and in the hills, um, in which we may be coming back and kind of pivoting from an original design that was conceived a number of years ago. Um, what we're hearing from the neighbors is simple reconstruction, uh, of the road, not reconstruction of the roadway, but re- rehabilitation. The quite as extensive as what was originally planned, uh, about 10 years ago. And so we're, we're going to hold some public outreach meetings to that extent. Uh, we were in that process to plan those when the coronavirus hit, so, uh, we will be getting back on that just as soon as we're, uh, able to. Uh, other projects that we're going to highlight here in 2021, uh, Francisco East, uh, as soon as the sidewalk project, uh, is mostly complete or all the way complete, we're going to begin, uh, resurfacing of that main arterial that services so many people in San Rafael. Uh, the Southern Heights Bridge Project, the bridge has been closed for a couple of years now, uh, we have all of our documents into Caltrans requesting permission at this time to advertise the plans and solicit bids. Uh, we expect to have that out in a few months, uh, just as soon as Caltrans approves our paperwork. And then the last one are some upgrades and, and access, uh, an access project, uh, inside the council chambers in which we'll be put a ramp, uh, up to the council desk there and some security improvements. What is in the pipe that, uh, coming down in terms of design and environmental phase? We have several major projects we want to highlight, notably the Third Street Rehabilitation Project between the intersection of Fourth and Seventh, all the way down to Third and Union. That is divided into two city projects for the purposes, uh, of moving forward. Uh, we have some important improvements we want to make at Show and Park, where the playground equipment was removed and repurposing that area to, uh, essentially double, um, the amount of on-street parking. Other improvements in the canal neighborhood include five locations where we want to make pedestrian improvements at critical intersections by installing some flashing beacons, signage to raise, uh, awareness to pedestrians in marked crosswalks. And then lastly, we have a project on Wolland Avenue, it's a safe pathways project that, uh, conveys children and parents over towards Laurel Dell, where we have a retaining wall that needs some rehabilitation and, uh, a bit more refinement and safety improvements, uh, there. So we're excited to be moving those forward, uh, in the design and environmental and construction phase just as soon as we can. Um, what is of interest and, and kind of dovetailing on a conversation earlier this evening has to do with revenue reductions. Uh, this table summarizes, it's also found in our draft CIP this evening. Uh, there's a lot of concern about what that might mean in terms of reducing the number of projects that we have moving forward. Uh, we are seeing that, uh, we are doing a transfer of some of our gas tax money into the general fund that would support staff time, uh, as it relates to roadway, uh, related projects. Noted here for the next fiscal year is a 30% reduction. Um, that is, uh, you know, the gas tax that we have includes a variety of streams of funding and not all of those are going to be hit in the same way, but we do anticipate a 30% reduction and that has already been factored into the projects that are listed in the draft CIP this evening. Uh, for next year, we've made an assumption that we'll have a 15% reduction and then in year three of our three-year plan, we're kind of at this point making an assumption that we will get back to normal. Uh, clearly we don't have a crystal ball, but, uh, we feel comfortable at least making that projection and certainly the next year as we return to the council, we can sharpen our pencil and kind of see how, uh, we're doing with revenues in our gas tax. These other fund types between childcare, uh, Measure Two Four, or Measure A and our 241 Fund and our Parking Services Fund also have all been impacted. Uh, Nadine may have, may highlight that we're anticipating a 25% reduction in our Measure A money coming from the county. And we have several projects that are, we're going to be hitting the pause button, at least temporarily, uh, while we kind of sharpen our, our pencil and better understand what the revenue implications might be in our childcare program, since they're not operating exactly, uh, during this time, uh, as they normally would. And the same goes with parking services. So we're a bit unclear on how to move forward, but we are, uh, we do have a bit of work, uh, on the dock there. Nadine, I'll turn the time over to you for this particular slide.
Great, thank you. Hello again. So I'd like to take a few minutes to go over the Measure A Work Plan, which we're asking you to approve tonight. A bit of background, this is a countywide nine-year, one-fourth percent sales tax that was approved in 2012. Fifteen percent of the annual revenues are allocated to towns, cities and special districts, of which the City of San Rafael receives about 23% based on its population. The city has historically used this funding to support park maintenance, vegetation removal, protection of open space and park-related capital improvement projects. For fiscal year 2021, due to the financial impacts of COVID-19 that has had and will continue to have on local sales tax, Marin County predicts a 25% reduction below last year's Measure A allocation. For the last several years, the funding amounts have averaged to approximately $450,000. This year, the notification received was about $365,000. As a result of the reduction, Measure A will be unable to absorb the same amounts of activities and services as in previous years. Therefore, the funding for the open space ranger and additional vegetation management has been removed from Measure A. As the services are extremely important and valuable to the city, staff is looking for other eligible funding sources outside of the general fund for these. As part of Measure A, we'll focus on the removal of vegetation and invasive species, specifically in city parks and open space, which will cost about $100,000 as it has in prior years, park routine maintenance of about $55,000 and a capital project of completing a park and recreation master study and plan, which will provide a framework for directing city resources towards parks, facilities and programs in the future. And that's expected to cost about $150,000. The remaining $60,000 would be allocated towards the highest priority park projects that are an outcome of this plan. With that, uh, the information and the work plan included as part of your staff report, we ask that you adopt a resolution approving the Measure A Work Plan for fiscal year 2021.
And with that, we will gladly accept any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, and, uh, let's start with Councilmembers' questions. Uh, I can't see the others, so can you help me?
Hunter, we can take the PowerPoint down so that the-
Let's do that, thank you. Um, questions? I see, uh, no one with their mute off, so no questions? In which case, let's go to, uh, public input.
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine. Additionally, I will request public comments be submitted on YouTube. Please note that to have comments read from the live chat, from the live chat, please write public comment and introduce yourself. I do see a hand raised.
Hi, it's, uh, Bill Kearney again, Sustainable San Rafael, uh, try to make this correct. Um, we generally support the public works, uh, proposed in the CIP, um, both for their inherent value to the community and also for the economic stimulus that, uh, they represent, uh, in these hard times. Um, I'll leave the, some details, uh, to our, our letter, um, and confident that staff will take a close look at that. I do want to highlight, uh, two items that are specific to, uh, climate change concerns. One is that, um, we, uh, very much support completing, uh, an open space, uh, a park and recreation master plan, uh, utilizing open space Measure A, uh, funds, um, which among other benefits should provide timely guidance for, uh, ecologically sound vegetation management of San Rafael's open spaces, uh, to reduce potential wildfires. Um, and I would point out that there might be some addition, there should be some additional funds that could be considered from, uh, the Measure C that was recently passed and a portion of which will be coming for city use, uh, as well, uh, for actual vegetation management. Uh, and then secondly, uh, the one project that jumped out at us is not one that involves a lot of city money, uh, but it's Caltrans work, uh, proposed on the Highway 101 northbound ramp, uh, exit, uh, at Central San Rafael. You know, we understand that this is a, about a $20 million state expenditure, um, that would replace the bridge that, at that location above, uh, the canal, uh, at the same, it would replace it at the same elevation as the current roadway, uh, without any regard apparently for, uh, already critical sea level rise, uh, and a flood threat in that area, um, which would drown out an essential transportation link within years of its completion. Um, so, uh, it's clearly, it's, it's clear that, um, that's a, uh, irresponsible, uh, design, uh, and we would, um, ask that the city use its, um, influence, uh, to avoid this waste of public funds, uh, working with Caltrans and insist, uh, on a revised plan that's responsive, uh, to this serious, uh, climate impact. So thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
I see no other callers and there are no comments on Face, on, uh, sorry, sorry, on YouTube, and that concludes public comment.
Okay. And, uh, Councilmembers', uh, questions, observations, draft a motion.
Can I, if I can ask a question?
Councilmember McCullough, sorry.
Well, I guess Hunter, I have to ask you since I can't ask Bill if he's on mute. Um, but, uh, it's my understanding that money had been allocated and if I missed this somewhere in the report, forgive me, but money had been allocated for, um, Peacock Gap Park, which is near, dear to my heart because I'm asked all the time, uh, over the years, when, uh, significant reinvestment will be made in the park. And in the, um, plan for the upcoming year, there's, uh, about $6,000 dedicated to the field. But, uh, my recollection is for 2020, I thought about $75,000 was going to be spent for new playground equipment. Is this a change and is the change the result of the belt tightening that we are looking at? Uh, or is there another reason or have I missed something in the process?
Very good question, uh, Councilmember. Uh, in response to that, no, this is not, y- yes, it is a change, but it was something that was perceived prior to the pandemic, so it's not a result of the belt, you know, belt tightening because of revenue. So it's not a result of the belt, you know, belt tightening because of revenue. In concert with our parks, you know, the management over in parks and recreation. I made some field trips. We visited a number of parks with Susan and your Waksen staff to better understand some of the conditions of our parks. Prior CIPs had earmarked several projects for different parks across the city for different improvements. And it became clear as staff started to converse about this subject, whether or not we were going down the right path. Were these the right parks, were the projects, projects the right projects to pursue in light of limited measure of funding? Certainly, the passing of Measure C might play into this and how much additional funding we may have for capital improvements. We're still kind of puzzling through that angle of it. But in working and discussing amongst staff, we felt it was, might be more appropriate to pursue a park and recreation master plan and have some sort of guidance on really bank for our buck and making sure we're spending our limited resources in the best way. Prior CIPs, I can say, I think there was a bit of conversation. I don't know that it was, is clear both internally and to the public about where our funds shouldn't be spent and being able to justify that. We have a lot of needs. Both our parks need upgrades in some form or fashion, but with the limited resources we have from Measure A to really better restricted funds for that purpose, we felt like it might be better for the public and for us to have a guide to look back on. And we want to pursue an assessment of all of our playgrounds and equipment and bring back a recommendation in the year that says, look, we think this is the best use of our funds as opposed to piecemealing improvements kind of hit and miss.
I, I get the importance of doing something a little more strategic, but I thought actually that the planning that had been done years in advance was in fact strategic. I thought that the Park and Rec Commission had signed off on a multi-year plan to address shortcomings in play structures in our parks across the city. And that's why for the last two or three years, I'd been looking forward to it. And I've been telling people who are asking me in the community in the Peacock Gap area, in the Glenwood area, that just as Victor Jones had been addressed, that Peacock Gap Park was coming. It was on the CIP, 2020 was the year. So to have this change made relatively recently, it will be disappointing to some. But I do hope that if we're moving towards kind of a more holistic approach, that it does take into account some of the parks that have been on the waiting list for some time and whose people are understandably getting impatient for changes or improvements to be made.
I can certainly understand that, and we'll be visiting more with staff internally and talking about that and what commitments we've made and how to best pursue those projects moving forward. They're certainly going to be in consideration. I don't expect any of those to simply fall off the list. But until we've felt that current staff were comfortable with where we're at in an assessment or a condition of where we're dealing with, it was a bit of a struggle to continue going down the path where we're committing these funds and looking in other parks where we have amenities that have been closed for some years versus ones that might need some rehabilitation. And so that, that's kind of the struggle we're grappling with and how ADA law factors into some of that. So we want to take a sharper look at it.
Thank you.
My, my sole question would relate to a near and dear project, which is the completion of the Bike Path second to Anderson. I know we've got Phase One completed with a considerable investment from various sources, including $300,000 from the city. But I understand that we have adequate funding in place to complete Phase Two in part because of reconfiguration of West Francisco. So I just wanted to hear you say yes, you've got that right.
Yes, and, and making the statement that the city is pursuing a project that is actually currently out to bid. We are soliciting contractor bids to reconfigure the roadway in which it would become a one-way southbound vehicular lane. So heading from Second Street down to Rice Drive, in which case we would repurpose the other travel lane into a, what we'd call a cycle track location for bicycles to, to ride out in the street there. They'll be separated from vehicular traffic using some strong delineators as well as street trees that we intend to plant to add beautification and make it a bit more aesthetically pleasing. The existing sidewalk that is in place will remain there. The original plan was to put a Bike Path on the backside of the sidewalk. We have since kind of repurposed the project. We are within budget, it's fully funded from a variety of different grants. We're excited to get this project off the ground.
Any idea when it'll be done?
We are looking for the end of the year. We've got a commitment that the bulk of the project needs to be done by the end of 2020 in order to ensure their funding is completely utilized.
Yeah, and thanks again to you and certainly Bill for the reconfiguration that's going to allow us to complete this. That was really quite good. Anything else before we go to motion? And we do have two items that we'll take separately.
I'd be happy to make a motion after giving my gratitude to the staff. This is always, it seems like it always comes at the end of really long meetings, but it, but, but there's so much work that goes into it and it's always, the information is laid out in a way that is easy to digest and understand, and we really appreciate it. And we always get the message that, and I know this isn't the main message, but there's so many needs and funding is limited. And I really appreciated how you started by talking through the metrics, as it were, the matrix, I should say, in terms of priority. I thought that was something new this year, and it helped understand, helped us to understand why some have floated to the top and some are still kind of in the middle. So with that, I'd be happy, okay, give me a second. You know, so excited the camera, but I have to find the document. I'd be happy to make a motion that we pass a resolution approving the Measure A work plan for proposed expenditures of Measure A funds.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, movement second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, matter carries five zero, turning to C2, the second portion of this item.
I make a motion that we accept the report on the preliminary three-year capital improvement program.
Thank you.
Second.
Movement second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Hi, the matter carries five zero, and move on to a response to grand jury report, web transparency. This will be a sure one, right, Lisa?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, Lisa Goldfin, Assistant City Attorney. This items before you to approve a response to the April 28th grand jury report called Follow-up Report on Web Transparency and Agency Compensation Practices. This is the most recent of several grand jury reports in the past several years examining whether the websites of local public agencies in Marin provide adequate access to important information about agency business and finances and especially compensation paid to agency employees and officials. This report is focused just on the issue of compensation for elected officials and agency employees. The grand jury for this report audited the websites of 34 of Marin's local governmental agencies, including the county, all the cities, and several sanitation, fire, and water districts. The grand jury looked at two, two things really. One was compliance with legal requirements. The state law requires agencies to report to the state controller every year the compensation paid to the agency's employees and elected officials. The controller then puts that information on a website at publicpay.ca.gov. And the agency is also required to post that information on its own website or a link to the state's public pay website. The city of San Rafael complies with all of these requirements. The second item that the grand jury looked at for this report was how easy it is for the public to access this compensation information on the agency's websites. And in this regard, the grand jury asked the city of San Rafael to respond to a couple of findings and recommendations for really refinements, minor refinements to how that information is presented on the city's website to facilitate the public's access to the compensation information. First, for ease of access, the agency, the finding is that the agency's website, when linking to the controller's website, should link directly to the most recent compensation figures for that agency. The city of San Rafael's website, previous to this report, did have the link to the public pay website, but not an automatic link to the most recent year. So staff does agree with the finding of the grand jury and the recommendation, and that recommendation has been implemented on the city's website. The second finding and recommendation is that for more transparency, the agency's website itself should have a detailed breakdown of the items of compensation payable to the city's, the agency's elected officials. And prior to this, the city's website has not had a detailed breakdown, just the total compensation and total benefits. The city has agreed with the grand jury on this finding as well. And so we've made some refinements to the website. We've shown now on the city council webpage a breakdown of the compensation paid to all the city's elected officials. And there's a link to that page also on the city attorney webpage and also on the elected city clerk webpage. So in sum, the resolution before you would, would respond to the grand jury that the city recommends, agrees with the grand jury's findings and has implemented the grand jury's recommendations. And we recommend that you adopt this resolution. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll disclose I'm making all of 850 bucks a month, or thereabouts. Grossly overpaid when compared to Councilmember Gamblin, who is accepting nothing, so for those that are interested. Comments? Any public? I'm assuming...
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine. Also, if you are participating by YouTube, please submit your comments and write public comments prior to your message and include your name introducing yourself. I see no YouTube comments and no, no one wishes to speak on the telephone.
Thank you very much, close public and come back for further, further comment or motion with regard to the resolution. Somebody, anybody? Thank you.
I have 27 questions that I'd like to have. I move, I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to execute the city of San Rafael's response to, to the Marin County Grand Jury Report.
Movement second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, matter carries five zero, and we'll now turn to council member reports, future agenda items. Anybody have anything? I'll mention very quickly, I've got a smart meeting Wednesday, it's going to be interesting. Our ridership is down to about 280 a day, it used to be 3,000, and that was in the earth-shattering. In other words, it's fairly, fairly enough. But it's down to about 280 now, and so we're substantially reducing the number of routes. And that's going to be a challenge. Also, Friday, first wildfire committee meeting, of which there are 17 members. Yikes, so in any case, that's taking place on, on Thursday. So with that, there's nothing on a successor agency, and therefore we shall adjourn. Thanks, everybody, good job.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.